Please.
Yes, okay. Board members, as I think you all know, tonight, among other things, is the board's reorganization. So I'm going to read the opening statement. We'll have a roll call and then we will take nominations for board chairman and then I will turn the meeting over to our chairman or chairwoman. The opening statement is, this is a regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on January 6, 2021 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, The Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on January 4, 2021, and has been posted to the municipal website. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Order of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April, 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year, and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, The Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton. Notices have also been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. So Claudia, if you would take the role now?
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Mr. Valvani?
Here.
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
I'm here.
Thank you.
So then our next order of business will be to ask for nominations for board chairman.
I would like to, this is Eve Coulson. I'd like to nominate Stephen Cohen, and particularly, he's our current chair, but I especially want to acknowledge his conscientiousness, his dependability, his fairness, and his good ideas.
Second.
All right, then, I think we can do this with a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then I will turn the meeting over now to you, Steve.
Thank you, Eve, and, and board members. The second order of business would be the nomination for vice chairman. Do I have any nominations?
I'll nominate Eve if she would like to do it again. She's been very competent. She's picked up, picked up the slack anytime she, there's been a need, and I think she's done a wonderful job.
I would agree. I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I think I seconded it, so we can.
Which vote?
So you can, you can just do it by voice vote, I think. Just, just all in favor, any opposed?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, Eve. We have, the next is the appointment of our attorney, Karen Casey. Karen, I think, has done an outstanding job.
Second.
And I'm very pleased.
Thank you.
I second that nomination.
We'll do this again by voice vote, Karen?
That's fine.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. All right, and now we have the appointment of a secretary. Again, our current secretary, Claudia, I feel, has done an outstanding job keeping us in order and organized.
Great.
I'll second that.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, now we have the end of the year report, which was in the packet sent to you. Karen, what's the procedure for this? How do, what do we, we transmit this to the council?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess if everybody has had an opportunity to look at it, what do we do? Do we make a motion to transmit it?
That would be fine.
And if, can I make a mention to something?
Yes.
If there's any issues that you think recur during the year that need to be looked at by council, obviously, we have code consolidation, which we're getting closer than ever this year. But if there are any other variances that you see coming up again and again, you know, you can make a recommendation that council should look at that and perhaps change it. I don't see anything jumping out at me, but I just mentioned that. Clarify.
That's a good idea. Maybe what we can do is, is at our next meeting, we can just take a minute and, and sort of poll the board and just see if there's anything out there.
Sure, we could, we could carry to the 27.
Yeah.
If you want.
It'd be great. Yeah, right now, and we have too many things going on tonight.
Agreed.
Um, okay, so would somebody like to make a motion to transmit this report to the council? If there are any questions, please bring them up.
So moved.
Okay. I guess, do we require a second on this, right?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, good. And we'll, I assume, do this as a voice vote also, so.
That's fine.
All right.
Aye.
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 All right. Now, before we start the hearing for 20 Nassau, we have two resolutions. They were both in your packet. The first one is case number 2020-906, 39 Tyson Lane Block 64601, Lot 7, in the R4 Zone. Have you had an opportunity to review it? If, if there are questions, please bring them up. If not, if somebody would like to make a motion.
I'll move to private.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it. Eve Coulson.
Claudia?
Cohen?
Yes.
Coulson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. The next resolution is case number Z 2020-894, 61 Heather Lane Block 202, Lot 5, in the R1 Zone. Once again, this has been included in your packet. If there are any questions or comments, please bring them up. If everybody is satisfied with the resolution, if somebody would like to make a motion.
So moved.
Okay. Okay, who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay.
The Cohen?
Yes.
Coulson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Okay.
Claudia, also Mr. Stein.
Yep.
He voted as well.
Yes, my vote, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, now we go on to the applications. The first application, the only application this evening, is, is case number Z 2020-828, 20 Nassau Street, Lot, Lot, or Block 19.02, Lot 17 through 20 in the CB CP Zone. This is a continuation of the previous hearing in December. So a couple of things that I'd like to suggest to the board. Procedurally, the way I would suggest this, and I'm up for comments here, we'll, we'll start off with Elizabeth Kim, our Historic Preservation Officer, who can give us kind of a summary of her findings. Then I would like to allow the applicant to finish their presentation. I mean, I believe they got halfway through it the last time, and I think it's important to have, have it completed. Then I'd like to have the board make comments and ask questions, and after that, the public will be allowed to ask questions and make presentations if necessary. We, we will have a cutoff tonight at 11 o'clock, and if we don't finish tonight, we will, we're prepared to have another meeting, or however many meetings we need to get through this, to assure that both the applicant, the board, and the public have adequate time to question. So there's, there's no rush to finish us this evening. So I guess, board members, does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so Mr. DeGrazia, we're going to allow Elizabeth Kim to start and go through her. Does this all seem acceptable to you?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, all right, Elizabeth, would you please give us a summary of your report?
Elizabeth, since we, you didn't testify the last year, I'm going to swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So to summarize, HPC sees memo, which really the majority of the comments that came from the commission and their discussion on concerns were really on the development of the new building and how to ensure that the mass height and proximity to the neighboring properties are done sympathetic to the Central historic district, and more specifically, to the fragile and unique Bank Street historic district. HPC actually was not supportive of the setback variance that was being requested along the residential Bank Street properties. They felt that the applicant should be encouraged to reevaluate the floor plan and maximize the building footprint, if possible, and possibly reducing the height and creating a setback and breaking up the rear wall, which was the most visible from the Bank Street historic district. They felt that the wall was solid and monolithic, and it could really have some special attention provided to that facade. They also further felt that adequate buffering should be provided along the portion of the new hotel building to protect the adjacent properties, again, from the Bank Street and the other property adjacent to it. At the meeting, HPC did share, excuse me, the applicant shared various changes that they had created to soften proposed solid wall on the rear building of the facade, and HPC really appreciated them taking the time to provide that. They do feel that they would like to recommend to your board to further have the applicant work with you and the residents to refine those details to make it a more successful application. There was some, if they're able to do some setback in the back portion, they do recommend also looking to integrate maybe some more green roof area within that space. One additional item that came up for the rear of the building was there were a set of steps in the service door that was access from the back of the Bank Street property to the parking garage area. And HPC would like for your board to consider if this is necessary, and if it is, to just ensure that it does not create any type of nuisance for the neighborhood. They had some concerns that people would be coming in and out to perhaps take a break during their work there. They weren't sure if it was going to be locked or not, so they had some noise and security issues. With regard to the appearance of the new building along Chamber Street, they also were appreciative of the three masses that were kind of being replicated from the existing building itself and creating that rhythm. But they did have some concerns, but they were just suggestions they had made, and it was not a consensus, but they felt that some of the vertical elements of the new building entrance and the glass and steel should be reconsidered. They felt the facade and the new construction could be set back a little bit more to break up the linear facade. They felt that the windows did not need to replicate existing windows of the building that's going to be retained, but that they should look at better proportions and for it to be sympathetic to the historic building itself. They felt that the new mansard roof should be similar in profile to the existing mansard roof to give it a little bit more depth and dimension, so it wasn't as linear. And they also felt that the existing brick, which they felt that they would like to match on the new building, although a great suggestion, they weren't sure that it was going to be successful, and perhaps they should look at a different material that was just different and not necessarily try to match was there. And then the last part was the signage. As far as the blade sign on the corner of Nassau and Chamber Street, they felt that it was inappropriate size and a bit too large. They also noted that most of the signs that are proposed have internal illuminations, and they also felt that that was inappropriate for the historic district. And the change of the new sign on the existing 20 Nassau Street building, they felt that the applicant should perhaps reconsider it and look further into the historic character of the building and design it to be a little bit more appropriate to what's existing and look at where they're going to locate it. And any type of LED lighting, they felt that they would like that to be within the, below the 3,000 Kelvin spectrum, which is a warm spectrum, which they usually recommend. And that was basically a summary of what historic preservation had come up with, and available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions on the board? Okay. Mr. DeGrazia, you would like to start.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Elizabeth, for the summary. Just to bring everybody back to where we were, this is a, as you know, an adaptive reuse project located on 20 Nassau. We started the first hearing by introducing graduate hotels. Pablo David spoke about the goals, the missions, you know, how the graduate focuses on sustainability, how it focuses on historic preservation. After that, we introduced Steve Oakley, our architect, who went through existing conditions. We then had our civil engineer, Tom O'Shea, talk about the site plans, stormwater management. After that, Meredith Bisdak and Michael Mills talked about the historic preservation plan and the care and the detail that has gone into figuring out what was appropriate to preserve and how to preserve it the best way. After that, Josh Zinder, local architect, discussed the existing building and his evaluation in terms of how it, it really does not suit itself for adaptive reuse, you know, due to ADA, you know, no conduits to run new utilities, a whole bunch of other things. After that, Steve Oakley came back to talk about the current projects, project, and he went through floor by floor, showing what was being proposed on each floor level. Then we had John McDonough, our landscape architect and planner, go through the green roof design, which you probably recall, and he also discussed the landscaping and the lighting. We then had George Jacamar go through the very positive impacts that the site's going to have on parking, basically how it's reducing the, the required parking by changing the use and then actually providing parking as well. He also talked about the positive impacts on traffic based on peak hours compared to the existing use, which is a fairly large office use, which is being converted. After that, we had Josh Zinder again do and talk about his analysis of FAR in the CB, in the Central Business District. And then we left off with Steve Oakley talking about the massing and the setbacks. Some of the, you know, some of the questions I had, Elizabeth had raised about the, the massing and setbacks, they didn't get to see the slides that were, you know, in terms of how to remove the variance. You know, putting a fence in the back doesn't, doesn't trigger a variance, so we could remove it that way, but it's less protective of the neighborhood. So I think what we'll do is we'll start with Steve Oakley, where we left off, kind of clarify and go through that, and then move forward at that point. Steve?
Yes, so I had us down as a page 119.
Okay, and Steve, just to remind you, you were qualified already, and you're under oath, and you still remain under oath.
Okay. So we had left off our discussion on the variances and some options that we examined early in the design process. First one was kind of grandfathering the existing facade into its location adjacent to the property line at the backside of Bank Street, and looked at options that would require no variances, which is similar to 22 Chamber Street, which would provide a six-foot fence around the property line and simply cover the building drop-off area, which also would have a, a scale, skylight element for the guest arrival experience, because we're backloading the lobby both from Chamber Street as well as this auto court, where you exchange your vehicle with the valet who takes it down to the basement parking facility. And then, you know, working through the last, we've been on, you know, in January of 2020, was when the graduate kind of hosted the introduction meeting of the project with the neighborhood in the coffee shop on the corner of Nassau and Chambers. And we held about 12 community meetings, running through different aspects and neighborhood meetings, as well as public, public events in order to come up with a design solution that's a little different than what's currently documented in the application. So one of the main changes, and this is kind of progressively looking at some of the comments that arrived, both from Sprab and from the neighborhood, was, you know, eliminating.
Steve, may I interrupt for a second? Can you just go back one, one more slide?
Sure.
I just want to clarify something. So we're requesting a variance. The, the building right now is on the zero lot line. I just want to make sure it's clear that the board understands. The left of the property is near a residential zone, so although the Central Business District allows zero lot lines for buildings, when it abuts the residential zone, you're required to go back 10 feet. However, the existing one has a 30, you know, 30-something foot structure, 32 feet, I believe, structure there now. So, you know, it's grandfathered in. We could keep the structure. That's what the first design was, so we don't have any variances with regard to setback. The other one is that we removed all of the, the rooms in the hotel, basically, from within the setback, so everything's setback 10 feet except for the fence. And we spent a considerable time with George going through why we need that additional area for circulation. So if you look at that second picture, you'll see the court is open. We just have kind of a picket fence there, so you could just see that area. That's the circulation element. To be the most protective of Bank Street and the community, we moved everything else of the building back, but we do need that circulation element. We could put it with the fence. We could put it with a higher fence. But really, the best design and the most protective is to basically encapsulate it, which is the preferred option that we're showing below. So in there, in that way, we can cut back on just about everything and, and make it really add some elements of green and, and make it very protective of the neighborhood, and that's sort of what the design is. That's what we're proposing. And it's different than what we originally had. And then I guess, Steve, you were going to go talk about how this plan, because we proposed the plan initially, how it's evolved based on meetings, not just with the, the community, but with Sprab and HPC, and how things have evolved over time. So I think that's where you were going to leave off. Thank you.
Oh, correct, yep. So then, Brooke, if you flip to 121, page 121. You know, this, this outlines most of the activity that occurred in the summer and early fall with a variety of meetings that, you know, enhanced the design. We added details to the, the brickwork on the bottom, gained consensus on, you know, continuing the mansard around the back in order to assist with the building scale. The project at this time also moved from 191 rooms to 178. So there was some room reduction that we took on in order to, you know, enhance, enhance the design and lower the building element against the Bank Street property line. The most significant latest one has been the removal of two rooms at the second floor. We've also started to look at the height of the fence. When we met with Sprab, there was some discussion of taking our eight-foot-high fence down to a lower elevation. But after looking at some of the detailing and, and discussions with the Bank Street neighborhood, we realized that, you know, following and closing the auto court was a much better solution, and also look to enhance the element of the, the corner of the property line, one surrendering a small triangular area where there's actually an existing encroachment from a neighboring property fence, and then raising that up with some elements to block, block noise and headlights coming in from arriving vehicles.
Steve, just to go back, can you just point out where the rooms are removed? You went through that pretty quickly.
Oh, sure.
That's the second story.
Second story projection.
That was shown originally to Sprab and HPC and, and everybody, and neighbors, and now it has been removed from the plan, correct?
Correct. So again, notes, you know, some architectural detailing that we've added, some greening of the wall. And then, Brooke, if you go to 122, you know, the design we were coming up with was, you know, maintaining the green elements that exist behind 11 and 13 Bank Street, letting those continue to grow up on the wall, probably maintaining them during construction, and then adding some green elements across the, the wall, which we reduced from, you know, an existing condition of 34 feet down to 20 feet, which also enhances the amount of daylight that enters into the backyard from the existing condition. And then we have a recess kind of an inner court that's, you know, that's 50 foot deep by 32 foot across. That element also adds a little bit of a break in the facade and, and bring some enhanced light down to the Bank Street neighborhood. And then the elements that we've been looking at, you know, there's a solid brick wall. We are on a property line, so we have some restrictions about how much, whether we could put windows in the units or not. So we have just looked into brickwork detailing and as well discussions with the Bank Street neighborhood regarding the exposure at 10-foot setback line. It was determined that, you know, it would be best if it didn't have windows related to nighttime light projection, as well as, you know, privacy issues. So we've worked through a lot of those details, both with the Bank Street neighborhood and our buildings adjacent on Nassau Street, which includes the Gunn Building and the Chase Bank Building.
Also, one of the requests from the neighbors were to push the wall back as much as possible, and at the end, weren't we able to shift the, the fence in on that area as well?
Oh, in the back corner. As I mentioned, there's a slight triangular section where we've pushed it in.
So on that side of the wall, there's about 29, even though it's generally on the property line, 29 square feet or so running the length along the property boundary, actually.
Could you, excuse me, could you show us that area in plan?
It's a small triangle, but it, it basically was able to pull back and create a little more space. It's a small triangle, but it 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 basically was able to pull back and create a little more space back there.
Yeah, it's hard to determine.
Okay, sure.
Quickly to see how it was in plan.
So this is uh sixty, I think the other one was better. Oh, yeah, okay, you can see it. Yep.
You're just trying to get the page number?
Yeah, yeah, so it's that triangle there.
Behind the car, in front of the car, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Originally, it went all the way to the corner running along the property and we were able to pull it back there.
Okay.
And the wall itself is about six inches in.
And that that wall, that wall in front of the car is how tall?
It was originally proposed as uh ten feet. Um, after meeting with the neighbors, um, we adjusted it to um up to twenty feet, which would be part of wall. And then a louver top.
And the wall continuing to, I guess it would be the. That that wall, I mean, the the rear wall.
All the same height.
Behind, behind the adjacent property is now how tall?
Twenty feet.
Yeah.
Twenty feet. Okay, that's still twenty feet. Okay, thank you.
And there it is. You can see it. That's the twenty.
Yeah, no, I see it. Thank you.
And we also made most of it masonry earlier. We had a a metal louver acoustical fence. But after discussions have enclosed, fully enclosed it with masonry.
And and uh, Mr. Chair, just to be clear, the reason why it's twenty feet is for a larger vehicle circulation. You know, if if we could have reduced it, we would have, but for to to allow for circulation there.
Circulation of what?
Vehicles, vehicles.
The auto, the auto court, the maneuvering that we reviewed at our last presentation.
But the height, the height is a function of that auto court?
It's a function of that and, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a clear, clear span area. So there's some deep structure that runs out from the hotel.
Is that, is that so one would not, are you talking, when you say a bigger vehicle, is it so you don't see if a truck comes in? I I don't quite understand that height. What it, what it's providing. Steve?
Yeah, I mean, customarily, we designed for about eleven foot for vehicles to pull under, which would handle uh, you know, kind of a a small delivery van.
Oh, that, oh, I, I.
So it would have a clear dimension of about eleven feet, then have a ceiling element, which would have some acoustical absorption material. And then it would have structure above. The structure is turning out to be about four feet deep. And then the construction of the terrace. Up above requires, you know, some dimension. So by the time we have the eleven-foot clear, we end up with about twenty feet to make the. The edge of the um, the green uh. Border.
Have you talked with the uh, the EMS people or the fire department to see if they want the ability to get an ambulance in there?
Yeah, I mean, the eleven-foot would accommodate an ambulance. And I know Tom O'Shea, we've had some early discussions with the fire department on the concepts.
Okay. We did. Thank you.
Do you have a view of the north facade?
Um, you mean facing Chamber Street?
No.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, north?
North.
Faces the adjacent, uh, old former bank building.
No.
So I could see that from a, you know, that angle too? No.
I don't think we, at at the end of our presentations, we have our renderings. I don't think we've prepared one from that angle. Could you describe it? I, sure. I mean.
Yeah, it's.
You drive under something or?
You drive adjacent to it and then you pull under it. And it it'll be very similar to the facade that's expressed on this, the return wall of that court. So you'd be looking at guest room windows along that facade element with the uh crown element and the mansard material. Uh, running out to the um Chamber Street facade.
But the, the windows that are on the north facade will be the driveway width away from the property line.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and so the wall on the property line would be how tall?
Oh, um, I guess, Brooke, if you go back to sixty-six was the plan. There's a wall that would return back into the um sixteen chambers. The sixteen Chamber Street building is built right on the property line along the north, yes. So we were anticipating returning the, you know, up to the fifteen-foot height uh fence and masonry wall. To align with that building.
Got you. And so basically, the the adjacent Chamber Street building provides the screening at that point. It's on the property line. It should. Okay, alright.
Yep.
Michael, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm still trying to visualize it, but. Go on.
I I think one of the renderings at the end of the presentation will illustrate that side, because when you're looking at it. Um, up Chamber Street, you can see that view.
Yeah, well, also, it's the Bank Street properties that look at it too. That's more of what I was gonna, wanted to say, what they see. So I'll wait. Thanks.
Okay.
So from that, we move into uh acoustics.
Yep. So um, Ryan, are you there?
Yeah, hi, I'm here.
Ryan, you were sworn in and qualified at the last meeting, so I think uh you're still under oath. So if you would like to uh talk about what you've done to evaluate the property, that'd be great.
Absolutely, thank you. Um, so this first slide, we're looking at slide one twenty-three. Um, to begin the study of uh noise impact on the community, uh, the first thing we did is is. Uh, set up a noise monitor to measure the existing noise conditions over a twenty-four-hour period. Uh, so that chart is what is shown here. There's three different lines. Um, each of them are representing the noise level, the noise environment over that period of time, but they're characterizing slightly different things. Uh, starting with the lowest line, the light blue line, that's the, it's called technically the L ninety, which is the noise level exceeded ninety percent of the time. Um, we use that metric to characterize what the. Continuous background noise always. So it essentially filters out a lot of the transient noise and uh picture. If there's an air conditioning unit running full-time, things like that. So as you can see, the noise level, the. During the daytime hours, when we started the survey around uh ten or eleven A M on that day. Uh, started at about fifty decibels and then once you reached nighttime conditions, it hit a minimum. Um, which was at forty-four D B A. And then as morning came, uh, there's more traffic and activity in there. It kind of picks up again. Uh, so that first line gave us an understanding of what the baseline is going on in the environment, kind of taking away. A lot of the other noises. The middle line, the dark blue line is called the uh L ten, which is the noise level exceeded ten percent of the time. So this is useful to understand um relatively. Major transient, so things that are happening for more than just a brief moment. Uh, so it gives you, generally, it's good for traffics. Starting and stopping at lights and things of that nature. So during the daytime hours, you can see that the L ten level is. Is higher than that previous line I described. So it's at about fifty-five to fifty-eight decibels. And then at night, it gets a lot closer to the the minimum noise level forty-four D B A. Uh, except for a few spikes where um from listening to the audio, uh, for this whole duration of the survey, we had audio that we could go back and listen to. Um, essentially, that was a, an air conditioning unit that clicks on and off that changed that baseline noise level. Um, probably what's most interesting in this graph is actually the the yellow line on top. And this line is showing the maximum noise level that occurred in each fifteen-minute interval over the period of measurement. Um, I've identified a few different peaks just to give you an idea of what was being measured. Uh, it's. Just to give you context, I didn't mention this before, the, in the upper right corner of the slide, it shows that the receiver location. It was on the backside of the building near uh on the existing driveway, near the entrance door. Uh, and that was chosen because it's one of the quietest locations. It was shielded from the more active Chamber Street. Uh, because the goal was to really get an idea of how quiet this environment is um in the absence of the hotel. So we can give you uh useful feedback. When we're doing our analyses. Um, so some of these peaks that you can see that are reaching eighty decibels, the first one is glass bottles. Um, some doors from the nearby uh of cars from the nearby parking lot. Um. And uh cars accelerating and just in in the distance that, uh, you know, when a light turns on. Uh, in the morning, I believe that we, one of the last peaks towards the right side of the graph, we heard. Uh, basically a garbage truck, we could hear the truck approach, the air brakes and garbage can noise. Uh, so the the point of this graph is really showing you what the overall acoustic environment is. So the kind of the minimum is forty-four D B A, but there's noises that happen throughout the day and night that range from. Sixty-five D B A up to eighty D B A. Um, and that'll come into more context when we discuss the the findings. Uh, so we can go to the next slide. So this first slide is showing us, um, we did a calculation of the projected noise impact for three different design scenarios. Uh, one scenario being the as-of-right, where we keep the existing facade. Um, the second scenario that was analyzed was a six-foot fence. And then the uh last scenario was the proposed design that Steve was just talking about previously. Where the auto court is fully enclosed with a, a um, a twenty-foot wall all the way up to the corner of the property. Um, so this, we're gonna go through a series of charts that show this. This first one is mapping out the noise impacts in the surrounding area. Uh, as you go from oranges to yellows to greens, the noise level decreases uh and the the scale on the right side shows you that. Uh, so this is for one event, we projected calculations that'll show you in a few slides. For other events, this particular event is for a car alarm chirp. So if you click the lock button, the car makes a little chirp noise. And uh, we're projecting out the noise level from that to the community. Based on this as-of-right configuration, you can see the shape of the noise going towards the Bank Street neighborhood. Um, it it's, there is a decrease, uh, you're going from yellow to a sharp drop to the green, uh, so it's a relatively low level of noise. Um, but you can see that the, it's spreading from that corner. The reason for that is, is that you have the existing facade along the majority of that parking auto court. And then at that corner, uh, we don't have the benefit of a barrier. And so you have more noise transmission from there. Uh, the last thing to explain on this slide is that the receiver height, uh, so the. Colors that are representing noise levels are if you were at five-point-five feet off the ground. So it's essentially if you're standing. In the backyard or in the parking lot in that Bank Street community, that's the noise level that you would hear. Uh, so on the next slide. This is the same analysis, but now conducted at fifteen feet. Um, and the idea of that is, is it's closer to perhaps a a second-floor window of one of the neighboring buildings. Um, as you get higher up, uh, because that north corner of the property isn't protected from an acoustic barrier. Uh, you can see that more noise transmission occurs and um, just gonna look here, I think I had the number, we. Calculated a maximum forty-three decibels um at the, at the closest locations and it decreases as it goes further out. So um, still relatively low noise levels, but higher than um when you're observing at five and a half feet. Um, the next, so that was slide one twenty-five, slide one twenty-six. This analysis is for a six-foot fence. Um, the difference here is, is that you can see the shape of the noise propagation is a little bit different. Uh, the reason is, is that the fence is now only at six feet, so we're having some noise bending over that wall. But you still are seeing the drop off a noise level from within the auto court to the the area outside of it. Um. The maximum noise level on that one. I don't have that. It's it's roughly in the order of, I think, thirty-seven decibels. Well, we do have the actual numbers in a few slides. So we'll, we'll mention that when we get to it. Uh, so the next slide is one twenty-seven. Now, this is at the height of fifteen feet. So the last slide, you were getting the benefit of that six-foot wall. Uh, when you're at fifteen feet, you're look now looking down over a a a wall that's shorter than your elevation. So you can see the noise propagation. It's very consistent from within the auto court and out. So the the six-foot wall doesn't give very much benefit at higher elevations. Um, so slide one twenty-eight. Now, this is the proposed design scenario. In this case, the difference from what we were reviewing uh at the beginning of these colored uh graphs is that the. North corner or the right side of the graph is um more fully enclosed with a twenty-foot wall. Uh, as part of the proposed design. So the noise. Is more substantially reduced. It's down in the uh mid-thirty decibel range. And um, so there are very little noise getting out and it's just kind of at that corner where you even have it measurable. The the rest of it was below the twenty-five D B in terms of our prediction, because the majority of the court is fully enclosed. And slide one twenty-nine. Is showing the calculation at fifteen feet. Again, you're still getting a very significant benefit in noise reduction. Because the the uh, the wall there at that corner is is much higher than the other scenarios and the remainder of the court is enclosed. So this slide gives a summary of some of the results I presented. In the previous slides that showed you how the noise gets out into the neighborhood, but it's summarizing the predicted noise levels for several different events. Um, the first set of bars are predicted noise levels for talking. Uh, so there's three shades. The lightest is for the six-foot fence scenario. The the middle bar and in the medium tone is for keeping the existing wall, the as-of-right. And the right uh, the right bar in the darkest tone is the proposed condition. Um, so you can see, uh, first for just people talking within the auto court, you're starting at a relatively low noise level. And it's then being attenuated for all of the cases. It's below the measured nighttime no- ambient noise level in the neighborhood of forty-four D B A. Um, and certainly well below any code requirements. The um. The two code requirements on this chart in general, just to to point you to those, there's a uh, red line dotted line. At the New Jersey code for continuous noise is fifty D B A. And the um upper red dotted line for impulsive noise sources is eighty D B A. Um, so walking across this graph, the the next set of bars is for a um car driving at fifteen miles per hour. Uh, that data point was used just because it, I have some um relevant research on cars, uh, car noise at that speed. Um, the speeds of travel in the auto court is significantly less. I I believe it was around five miles per hour that. Uh, the traffic consultant had said would be a maximum feasible speed in that, in that auto court. But even with the speeds, um, the predictions are showing for that, for all design scenarios, the noise is below the fifty D B A. Um, for the proposed design scenario with the the fully enclosed auto court and the twenty-foot wall. Um, were below thirty D B A, uh, so well below the nighttime ambient noise level. Uh, the third set of bars is presenting the alarm chirp case. Um, so again. The noise levels are overall are well below code requirements. Uh, in this case, it would be, the applicable code would be eighty decibels. Because it's a, an impulsive noise. Um, and you can see that the contrast, the proposed design is giving a lot more benefit. Than the other options because of the additional attenuation. In that case, it's thirty decibels and and below the nighttime ambient noise level. Um, and then the last set of bars is for a, the noise from a car door closing. Um, that's the loudest of the the different cases analyzed here. Um, but again, below code limits and the proposed design would also be below the quietest nighttime ambient noise levels. The, uh, just to put it in context, the the last thing on this chart, there's on the left-hand side, there's a a double arrow saying noise range for transient events. Um, and that's roughly fifty-five D B A to eighty B B A. And that's from our initial analysis of different. Noise occurrences that we measured over that twenty-four-hour period. So you can see that the predicted noise from the auto court is is. At or below that range in all these scenarios. So that was uh slide one thirty, and I believe that's the last slide in, um, oh, I'm sorry, there's one more slide here for for my component. Uh, last, uh, that was the auto court, but we also reviewed the impact of mechanical noise for exterior mechanical equipment. Uh, there is existing mechanical equipment located between the. There is existing mechanical equipment located between the NASA building and the chambers building that's. Protected in terms of noise with a parapet. Part of that parapet will remain and will block line of sight to the, to the. Surrounding areas at ground level or even up at say a second story window. There's also mechanical equipment highlighted in, in light blue on this chart. On the upper roofs, all of that equipment will be surrounded by mechanical screens that provide a noise reduction benefit. And the building itself actually provides shielding of that noise level from, from the nearby receivers. There's two data points here presented, one is at the, the closest building on the. Closer to the bank, on bank street, closer to the proposed building. And we're calculating 35 dB from all of the equipment, if it were all running. Together based on the manufacturer's data and the, the noise reduction provided by the design. Across bank street, I believe that's to the west. The predicted noise level there is 32 dB. The, so it's below the ambient noise levels and also below code limits. There's also a prediction we ran for the emergency generator that will be located within that screened area. And the predicted noise level for that is also below the. New Jersey code requirement, I have to reference the predicted noise level. The generator was predicted at 48 dB when running, which is still below the 50 required by code. And that would just run in a no power event or, or shortly for. Cycling for maintenance purposes.
So I think that brings us up to.
Shadow studies.
Can I, can I ask one question? On the, did you look at any of the initial studies that you had, the alternatives with that? With the, I guess it's the west wall that's right on the property line. Did you look at any of those with the wall set back 10 feet?
No, the, the only cases that were analyzed were those three, the, the as of right, six foot fence and then the, the proposed design.
Okay, but you didn't, you didn't look at the other then.
Well, no, the as of right would have had the building set back 10 feet with the fence.
I stand corrected, yeah. So I use the Steve's architectural drawing for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Brooke Core.
Yes.
You were qualified and sworn in at the last meeting, you still remain under oath.
Okay.
So, yeah, although, you know, the, the municipality doesn't have a requirement with regard to shade. Studies, a couple of the neighbors asked us to take a look at this and we went through and. Here's, here's the, some of the documents we prepared.
Yeah. So another way that we've analyzed the massing of the hotel was to look at how. The proposed building might shade bank street, but specifically in comparison to how the existing building. Is shading bank street today. And so you'll see on the right side, we've been referencing sun path diagrams. And it's important to note that these typically do not account for daylight savings time. Because it's just objectively tracking the sun's altitude and azimuth between sunrise and sunset. And so while it's industry standard to typically look at three snapshots throughout the day. You know, some hours after sunrise, noon, and then some hours before sunset. Out of discussions with our bank street neighbors and to perform our due diligence, we've actually kind of created. Some sort of animation, which kind of helps us cycle through the hours. Of the morning, looking at different intervals so that we can really kind of get an idea of the progression of the shading. But again, specifically as it relates to how it is today. And so just looking at this first slide in order to just get oriented with how these are going to be laid out. We're looking at a comparison of the existing building shade on the left. And the proposed building shade on the right, we're looking up bank street towards Nassau street. And so north is going to be at the bottom of the page. And these snapshots are both at the same time of day. 8:00 AM on the fall equinox. And so if we first look at the existing building on the. Shade diagram on the left, you'll notice that there's also no trees or any other environmental factors. Because this is strictly looking at buildings and the structures in our vicinity. And just in looking at the existing building shading as it is today. You'll see that there's actually a good amount of shade. And largely a lot of it coming from the residential neighbor itself as they start to shade each other. And so now looking at the proposed building shading on the right. What's really important to look at here is what's highlighted in blue, because that is what's different. Than what is there shaded today. And so. Just this is again, starting at 8:00 AM and I can just slowly. Progress through our slides and you'll see how the area shaded in blue. Is going to diminish throughout the morning. 9:30, 10:00 AM. 10:30 AM, 11. And 11:30. And 12. And then looking at the winter solstice. Sorry, slide 142. Where the sun angle is the lowest and so. The most dramatic shading and even here you'll see in the existing again, that there is already. A large presence of shading and a lot of the houses are even shading the houses on the opposite side of the street. And where our proposed design is adding shade in large part just to the roofs on, on our side of bank street. So looking at 9:00 AM. And then 10:00 AM. 11:00 AM. And 12:00 AM. On the spring equinox on 147. 8:00 AM, 8:30. 9. 9:30. 10:00 AM. 10:30. 11. 11:30 and 12. And then finally, the summer solstice, slide 157. Starting with 7:00 AM. 7:30. 8:00 AM. 8:30. And then here also, I'd like to point out that you will start to see. Actually areas in the existing building diagram on the left. Areas where we're cutting back from the existing building and we're actually allowing more light in. So there is a difference. In where we're bringing some light, more light in towards bank street. So 9:00 AM. 9:30. 10:00 AM. 10:30. 11:00 AM. 11:30. And 12.
Thank you. So. That brings us to Josh. Zinder, I believe, and signage.
Yes.
I believe you were qualified and you were sworn in.
Yes, I was.
Okay, you're still under oath.
Thank you. Here you see some historic images of Nassau street with some of the signage highlighted. The signage is a mix of facade, blade signs, awnings and glazing signs. This is something the hotel is trying to capture in their approach to the signage. Next slide. Next slide. And I, I can't actually see the number on it. So. What's the page? 170, thank you. The large blade sign that is being proposed on the Nassau street corner has been scaled to work with the size and proportion of the historic building. In a similar way that the La Hare sign works with the scale of its facade. But the hotel sign occupies only 31% of its facade, which is significantly less than the 43% that the La Hare sign occupies. The sign is well proportioned with the scale of the facade. As everyone knows, signage is a critical factor in wayfinding. And this sign is scaled to have visual impact on the street traffic from both directions on Nassau street. To help ensure that cars will turn on the chambers for the entry. Please note that, that, please note, when you look at this image, that the Nassau street tenants. Will have signage on their awnings, including the three that are on. The chamber side for sacred coffee. The awnings for the hotel on chambers will not have any text or signage. Next slide.
Before you go there, Josh, and I, I don't know, maybe you touch this later on, but during our original design had a different color to the signs and we've changed it. Do you address that later on, or do you just want to, I know Sprab had indicated, it was like, almost like an orange type.
Originally, the colors of the signage were. Were keyed towards the Princeton University, orange and black. And they've been updated so that they've become a little bit more neutral with a black background and just a simple white, white letter. So.
That was recommended by Sprab and I think that the HPC also liked the new coloring scheme.
And also edge lit, correct?
I was going to get to that, yeah.
Sorry.
Take my thunder. These are all signs proposed at this time. Please note the pylon sign that was in the original proposal has been eliminated, thus eliminating one of the signage variances. The illumination of the signage, which was mentioned by Elizabeth Kim earlier. You know, as an issue, because the signage previously was rear lit, has been changed based on the HPC feedback. So it is no longer re illuminated, but will be halo lit. So just the edge of it will, will glow. So this will reduce the amount of light coming off of it, but it'll still allow it to be red. The sign that has the parking rates will be in the drive court, so it will not be seen from the street. The large blade sign, as we noted, is scaled to fit the size, the size of the facade. There are two entry signs for the hotel, one above Nassau street, which sits in the existing opening. On Nassau street and the other at the new chamber street entry, sitting on top of a metal canopy. The other blade sign. At the entry to the parking court. Is a drop off and parking indicator on Chamber Street directing guests and visitors to the drive court. This blade sign has gotten considerably smaller based on the change in its use. It now directs vehicles into the parking court. Now it is only 11 square feet, a reduction of 33 square feet. From the previous, what was previously submitted. And it is scaled appropriately to its use and location on the size of the street for Chamber Street. The last sign is a glazing sign and for now it calls out Point Dexter. But this is just a placeholder for the name of the speakeasy or bar establishment. Which will be in the existing basement and as soon as they have a name for that, they'll submit it, but it is compliant. That particular sign is, is compliant.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Oh, why do you have different scripts?
Well, it's, it's one script for graduate at the. At the two facade signs at the entries and then. And also the script at the, at the corner. So these three scripts are the same. The large sign. The script wouldn't read as well, especially, you know, being something that's supposed to be directional sign. And, and so for an identity holder, it makes more sense for it to be just the, the large format text, capital text.
Okay, thank you.
One, one question though, Josh. Do you think that the projected sign on Nassau street is going to be partially blocked by the street trees? So somebody coming down 27 onto Nassau, it might, it might block that signage.
Well, I'll sort of slide to the side, if you look behind me. You can see that the sign is, is actually is exposed and that's part of the reason for its location right on the corner there. Is because the intersection needs the, the, has, is clear of the trees. And so it'll allow for, you know, a 50 foot viewscape to that sign, thus allowing people to see it before they have to turn.
Okay, thank you.
It's a signage. Steve, you muted.
Actually, I think John McDonough was going to start walking. Use some of these slides for his presentation.
John, are you?
I'm here, I'm above you in my screen, Chris.
Okay, thanks, John. So we had you sworn in and qualified both under landscape architect and planner. And you took an oath and you still remain under oath.
Yes, and for the record, again, John McDonough. I'm the project planner, my licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, my license is still current and in good standing. And we've been commissioned to conduct a planning analysis. Of the subject application and as we stand now. I believe the board has an abundance of information. Forty, over 40 plan sets, planned drawings here. Over 170 slides as part of the presentation package. And an application that has gone through great thought, great care. And I'll say great sensitivity to its, its prominent location and to the surrounding land use context. With that abundance of information, I believe there is substantial credible evidence on the record for. Me to have a predicate for the planning conclusions that I am about to render. We're starting here with slide number 172, which is a depiction of the existing building. As we see now at the corner of Nassau and Chambers. Again, the core benefit of this application is that the applicant is proposing to retain the nice portion of the building. Eliminate the undesirable portion of the building and again, enhance and amenitize. And pull in what is actually a permitted use here in the zone scheme. So with that, slide number 172 shows what's there now. Brooke, if you could advance to the next, which I believe is the after slide and just gives a sense of the. Additional floor area that the applicant is proposing, which is triggering the primary relief here and we'll, we'll get into why that statutory test has been met. Next slide, please, Brooke. Okay, and this is another view from Chambers looking back at Nassau, that's the existing condition. Next slide, please. And this is the after in the proposed, slide number 175. If we could slide to the next one, please. So 176 shows the view from bank street, we've seen many slides in this regard. In the deck of presentation materials, if we could go to the next one to show the proposed. And then finally, if we could flip over to the next 178. Again, another view from bank. And the after in 179. Again, reminding the board and we'll go through this in further detail, that that upper portion of the building that you see, the. Primary portion of the building does comply, both from a height standpoint. And from a setback standpoint, in terms of meeting the requirement for 10 feet setback to residential. The relief that the applicant is seeking pertains to that wall, that, that podium wall, I'll call it on the base. Which provides the planning benefit of a confined space, it could be an open airspace in that particular portion. So to the extent that relief is required, this does come out of, I'll say neighborhood meetings. But also to mitigate any impacts that may be associated with this permitted use. And I would offer a better zoning alternative for the site. Again, reminding the board, the applicant is here for floor area relief. This is not a use variance application and the portion of the building that you see from this particular vantage point. On the bank street side is actually in, in conformance with, with the zoning requirement from a height standpoint. It does not exceed the 65 foot height threshold. Next slide, please. So here we are again, back on the Chamber Street side, showing the, the finished product. Again, if portions of this building were cut out on the Chamber Street side, I believe it would. Again, if portions of this building were cut out on the Chamber Street side, I believe it would erode the integrity of the building for sure. And reminding the board that the overall shell of the building actually complies from a zoning standpoint. If the applicant were to put, I'll say a two floor or two floor high amenity on the rooftop, that would reduce the floor area, but certainly create opportunity for more active space such as banquet space on the top. I think that's an important consideration as well. Also reminding the board that this is a zone that allows as permitted uses, many uses. This is, it's the heart of your downtown. It is zoned for active use. It is zoned for people. It encourages a magnet land use as what the applicant is proposing here. Again, a catalyst project to add life to the area. That's exactly what this particular land use and this particular development will do. Again, other types of development here, multi-family build out. A lower end type of hotel may have perhaps more cutouts or more open areas in the building, which would provide for more active space. It could certainly have more of a, I'll say, an active impact on the Bank Street side or on the area as a whole. So again, the planning benefit of the floor area relief is that you get a beautiful building, nicely proportioned building, makes, makes good design sense. It is a confined enclosed space as opposed to again, an open air active space. And again, the, the public benefit of, of repurposing this visually prominent, prominent corner in the downtown. Next slide, please, Brooke. Okay, so again, just the final visual here. Again, I'm just trying to establish the practical side of the application from a planning standpoint and then we'll launch into the particulars in terms of the statutory criteria. But again, this is what you'll see, this, this beautiful addition to the downtown on the corner of Nassau and, and Chamber Street. With that said, the applicant is here in the CB Central Business District, reminding the board that the use is permitted in the zone. The applicant in terms of the primary relief that is sought here is for floor area ratio. And then interrelated C relief, which has been hit along the way by the witnesses before me. My planning conclusions are reliant upon all of the evidence on the record. I am not making a net opinion here in terms of my personal opinion of, about the application. But again, rendering this opinion based on all the evidence that has been provided to the board. So in terms of a rundown of the relief, the primary relief again, in terms of the pure numbers is a floor area ratio, which is at 3.62 in a zone that requires or allows a cap of 1.5. But reminding the board that the current floor area is 2.67. So, so the delta between that which is there, 2.67 and what is proposed at 3.62 is sort of a benchmark for where we go from a, from a planning standpoint.
And John, John, just interrupt. If we're looking at base zone, it also allows parking garages in this location at 3.0.
Thank you very much. Yes. And again, we'll hit this as we go through the zone plan reconciliation, but this is a zone that does allow for parking structures as a permitted principal use. So a public parking garage could actually go on this site. And I know there are neighborhood concerns about the cars and, and the sound and we've just heard testimony in that regard. But again, considering what the zone plan ultimately contemplates here, again, we, we offer this as a, as a much better zoning alternative. The setback to the residential, it's not on the sides that you see here. But it's the slides that we saw on the, on the prior slides on Bank Street from zero feet versus 10 feet. Podium could easily be exposed on that side with just a fence. Again, we think that this is a much more mitigative measure and a better zoning alternative for the beneficiary of, of the neighbor in terms of screening the parking and the impacts that may be associated with it. That fence wall height, which has landed at 20 feet on the backside versus six feet, follows the same rationale. It effectuates that parking court in the back and I'll say armors that parking court from the neighboring land use and mitigates the impact. Relief related to the number of loading spaces whereby three would be required under the analytics of the ordinance. We have one here, which meets the actual demand for the operational and traffic testimony on the record. Heard a lot of testimony about the parking supply here and how this will actually meet the hotel driven demand on this particular site. The applicant is looking for relief to have 80 valet parking spaces here, whereas 100 would be the minimum required under the ordinance for valet parking. But again, the supply being proposed here, you've heard great extensive testimony about the operation and management of, of that valet parking arrangement. Finally, we land with the signage package, package, which you've just heard through Josh's testimony. Again, how it all integrates well with the overall package that the applicant is proposing here. Notwithstanding the analytics, and I'll run through that for the board at, at the conclusion here with respect to the blade signs and the Chamber Street entrance side and the Nassau Street sign. This is going to be a very tasteful sign package. It is certainly not going to constitute over branding or visual clutter or sign clutter here. It is certainly tasteful and has evolved through a very long inclusionary process to what you, you see now. Clearly, the planning benefit of safe and identification of the site outweighs any impact that would be associated with that sign package. In terms of the legal justifications, or I'll say the legal framework for the relief that the applicant is seeking as a, as a planner, we recognize that all good planning operates within a legal framework. And here in New Jersey, we have good statutory and case law that has established basis for grant of what's called a D4 variance under the land use law and the statutory test here is known as the Randolph Town Center test or Randolph Town Center case. That was a case where the court affirmed a more relaxed standard of proof than what would be a D1 use variance for use that is not otherwise permitted in the zone. And the focus of the test again is not whether the use belongs there in the first place, but whether the site can accommodate any problems that are associated with that additional floor area. We'll come back to those problems as part of the negative criteria and how the applicant has addressed them, has identified them and has satisfied them to minimize any substantially negative impacts on any surrounding properties. With respect to the statutory positive criteria, the project will benefit the community as a whole with a multiplicity of public benefits. Project is going to be a major investment in community and as you can see here, a very visually prominent location in the downtown. This is going to be a beautiful premium building. This is not going to be a low end hotel. This is not going to be a efficiency hotel or an economy hotel, which is something that is allowed here in the zone plan as a permitted principal use. So it is allowed by right. Again, a very visually prominent location that is going to be upgraded with the improvements here. Project will also promote historic preservation with portion of the building that you see in the foreground. The applicant has worked very hard to work with your historic preservation commission here. And great care and detail has gone into the design of this building. Project is certainly going to add overall value, quality, people, activity and revitalization to the downtown, which is a core goal of the master plan as well. This is going to be a catalyst project that is going to bring consumers to the downtown. So it is certainly going to have a very positive ripple effect for the local businesses that are in the area as well. The project is going to promote the master plan goal for economic development and a stable ratable base, a number of vacancies in that, that building now. And this is certainly going to add life, vitality and viability to that building. Project will promote the master plan goal for sustainability with that green roof element and the green features that were spoken about at the last hearing. As you heard, the project will exceed the requirements for lead certification. The project will feature many amenities that can be enjoyed by not only the, the I'll say the guests here, but the public at large. It is primarily designed for the, for the people who will, the guests who, who will reside here. The project has been designed, as I said, with great care, sensitivity and upgrades to the Bank Street side, reminding the board that that extension on the Bank Street side is now 100% paved over. It is going to be 100% green by the time the applicant is done here. The project will add greenery and privacy to that Bank Street extension. And again, is going to benefit the whole downtown with again, a nice catalyst type building. The additional floor area that the applicant is proposing here is primarily related to amenity space that will add value and quality to the building. Again, reminding the board that the overall shell of the building in terms of the setbacks, in terms of the height controls are consistent with the volumetric considerations under the zone plan. All of the above promote the purposes of the land use law, but especially promote purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare. Purpose G, the planning goal to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. Purpose H, the promotion of the free flow of traffic. Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. And purpose M, the planning goal for efficient use of land. To a certain extent, this is going to be adaptive, adaptive reuse of a portion of the building. And again, redevelopment or reconstruction of the other portion of the site. That goes towards the positive criteria. Looking at the individual relief that the applicant needs with respect to floor area and the subsidiary C relief. I think all potential problems here with the added floor area have been well vetted by the applicant and the extensive testimony that has been put on by experts on the record. And just to run through them and also to remind the board from a pure analytics standpoint in terms of the absolute numbers here. The proposed floor area is at 98,269 square feet. Taking away the 91,993 square feet that is presently there equates to approximately 26,276 square feet. So the added problems that may be considered with respect to that additional floor area, height. Well, height complies, as I said, again, this is within the 65 foot threshold. A tall wall could certainly go on that Bank Street side. A theater is a permitted use in the zone plan here. And certainly a, a theater is something that could conceivably have a high wall on that Bank Street side as well. Shadows, well, you have fresh evidence on the record this evening that's been addressed with very detailed shadow studies. And what's important here is the delta between what's there now and what's proposed. And as you saw through Brooke's testimony and Brooke's exhibits, the delta is not going to be substantially adverse here or substantially adverse in terms of its impacts from a shadow standpoint on the adjacent neighborhood. The operative question under the statute is not whether there is an impact at all, but whether the impact is substantial or substantially adverse. And based on the testimony on the record, the delta between the before and the after is not substantial. Sound, you have testimony, fresh testimony on the record this evening as well. That's been, the noise is contemplated in the zone scheme based on the other uses that are permitted here. The sound levels are not going to exceed the state regulations. And again, this is an armored confined space that the applicant is proposing here. Again, reminding the board that a parking garage is something that is a permitted principal use in the zone. Other considerations may be traffic and as stated over and over again, the parking supply will meet the hotel driven demand. We have uncontroverted expert opinion and testimony and detailed study in that regard. Again, reminding the board, this is not an event hotel here. So the, this is not going to have special events here that would trigger unusual traffic related or, or sound related aspects as well. Lastly, relief can be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan and the ordinance. The planning intent to avoid overdevelopment is met by all of the evidence that is on the record. Planning intent to avoid obtrusive incompatible massing is also met by all of the evidence on the record. The overall project massing is compatible with other massing in the downtown. We've looked at this as an infill development. We've looked at the, the flanking building there on the Chamber Street side and how this is a blend of that which is there. The project advances the master plan goal and will not create substantial impairment to the zone plan to support downtown development. Relief relates to a specific site and not the zone as a whole. So in that regard, is not tantamount to a rezone. And as we've said over and over again, this is a permitted use in the zone and this is going to be of the highest quality of that type of a permitted use. Not a lower end hotel, which, which could go here. So that added floor area adds that value. With respect to the subsidiary relief, the interrelated C relief. I would offer that the legal test under the flexible C balancing test is met whereby the benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh the detriments. And just to make the record, again, the pull in case is the case that says we must consider the application as a whole when considering the relief that the applicant is seeking. All of the relief and all of the benefits that are cited under the floor area positive criteria carry forth to the subsidiary C relief as well and are necessary to effectuate an overall beneficial project. In terms of the potential detriments, they've all been addressed or mitigated by the applicant. The setback to the residential at zero feet versus 10 feet is a better zoning alternative than an open parking area, which would require no relief. The fall, the fence and the wall height at 20 feet versus six feet is a better zoning alternative than a lower wall, which would require no relief. The loading space, as we said, additional space here would be wasteful and is unnecessary in the context of the operational scheme. We've already addressed the parking count. And then finally, with respect to the overall sign package, this is not going to be an overbearing or overpowering sign package and certainly is going to blend well with the building framework that supports it. In terms of the actual relief for signs on the Chamber Street entrance, the building that you see or the sign that you see in the foreground, 56.91 square feet versus 10 square feet. I'm sorry, the sign that you see in the background, not the foreground. The Nassau Street is going to be at 10.89 square feet versus 10 square feet. The Nassau Street blade sign, that's what we see in the foreground is actually at 43.65 square feet versus eight square feet. Likewise, for the Chamber Street blade sign. And then finally, the Chamber Street parking garage sign is at 10.31 square feet versus 10 square feet. With that said, for all of the reasons that are given and all of the evidence in these slides and the plans that are pinned forth before you, the applicant has certainly met its statutory burden under the, under the law. From a practical planning standpoint, this is a very good, very positive addition. It'll certainly be a net positive to the area. And in that regard, the statutory criteria for all of the relief are met. And approval is certainly warranted in this application. With that, I'll rest or pause unless I'm up for questions or redirect.
Can I ask a question? I, I heard you touch on the valet parking variance, but I, I might've missed it, but did you mention the actual parking, number of parking space variance in your summation or?
I fold that into the traffic testimony as well. The predicate for that was all put forward by George in, in, in his testimony. Yes.
Thank you.
So just, just to be clear for the record on the, the parking, because I have the numbers in front of me. The existing building exists with a deficiency of 190 spaces. I just want to make sure that the board understands it's not just the preexisting condition, but variances were granted related to parking, allowing the current building and uses that generate a hundred, a variance for 190 parking spaces. By shifting the use from office to hotel, we are substantially decreasing the amount of parking needed. So when we go from the existing variance condition of 190, I'm looking at the whole site. The new required variance would be 165. So basically we're going from a variance of 190 to 165. If you are just looking at the new construction, it would come down to 165. It would come down to one hundred and twelve, just looking at the new construction. Would be, would be required for new construction. Now that's just looking at the counts. In addition to reducing the demand. We are adding parking eighty spaces. So when you, when you add that in, we are going from a variance for the entire site that exists today. For a hundred and ninety spaces and this project is reducing it to a variance. Or new deficiency for the entire site of eighty five. So we're going from one ninety to eighty five. And if you're looking at the new construction portion alone. Where, you know, the new construction, if it was built without the front of the building there, just looking at what we're building new. We're building a hundred, would, that would generate a hundred and twelve spaces, we're providing eighty. The deficiency would be thirty two under the ordinance, again. On a property that has variance for a hundred and ninety.
Christopher, just a clarification, my memo called that parking variance of forty two point two seven based on the new construction. You're, you're correct, the existing building, the change of use greatly reduces the parking demand, but the actual variance is for the new construction and. We had looked at forty two spaces, I just want to put that on the record.
Okay, yeah, and it's, it's slightly different than your calculation because yours was based on the original plan too. We removed a few rooms. We had labeled a parking ramp as hotel use generating parking demand. It, it doesn't, it's floor area, but it's not, it's not hotel use that generates parking. So when you get that all together, based on the updated plan. That forty something spaces you had is actually a deficiency of thirty two. And that's based on that new, you know, the, the sheet we submitted, you know, a couple of months back.
I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, but that's where, I do have that sheet and that was referenced in my memo, that's why I came up with the forty two, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. I don't know if it, maybe the ramp elimination was after that was done, I just want to get clear, so I'm trying to. The tent space difference, obviously. The, the general parking for the buildings reduced from what's there now. But I just wanted to put on the record that there's the variance for the valet and the variance for the, the new construction parking generated, so.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I know there's a number of people, I don't think, in terms of our direct right now, I know there's a number of people out in the community that want to speak. I think at this point, we could, we, I'm, I'm sure we'll answer any questions of the board first, but. At this point, I believe we've. Gone through, oh no, wait, Steve, do we, did we go through the, yeah, we did go through the renderings, okay. So I guess we can turn it over to the, to you, Mr. Chair at this point.
Okay. Thank you. I guess the. We'll open it up to the board for questions. Would somebody like to ask a question on the board? Any, any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I just wanted to, sorry, go ahead.
I, I said a brief question just to explain to me again, only because it's, it's a term I wasn't. Familiar with, the Pullen test regarding the C variants. Could someone explain that again?
Thank you for that, for the record, John McDonough. I, I'll give the planning synopsis of it, not trying to be too legal here. But the Pullen case, it was a applicant named Henry Pullen who, who applied for C variances. And as part of that application and, and part of the court decision that came subsequent to it. Said, you're not supposed to necessarily consider C relief individually. In other words, if a setback requirement is ten feet. And an applicant is at one foot, that's an obvious substantial delta from an analytic standpoint. But if it's tied to an overall project benefit, looking at the project as a whole. That's the key aspect of, of the Pullen case is to consider. The aspect of that individual relief in the context of the whole project. And that's why I fall back on that, that parking variance in particular in the back or the setback variance of, of the ten feet. It's certainly a better zoning alternative. Than if there was an open air parking lot in the back, exposed parking lot with just a fence than a, than an enclosed podium. And of course, folding in all the overall benefits of the project that come with that relief.
Thank you.
Right, let me ask, ask a follow up to that, so basically, you're basing, you're basing the determination, I, I, as I understand, on the overall. On the overall project, but the, it's a, you're basing it on what's proposed now with no setback. As you use that as an example. So you're basically basing your determination that the, the zero. Foot setback, the no setback is. Outweighed by the overall aspect of the project and other considerations in the project.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman, there's, it is, in my opinion, there's actually two parts to it, one, it's a better zoning alternative. Than what could be, and two, it effectuates the overall betterments of, or benefits of the project as a whole.
Okay, but you're, you're basing it, you're basing it on what's proposed, I mean, you didn't, again, there are no alternatives in there of. Moving it, so it's just based on the proposal.
Absolutely, correct.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, the, I, I just wanted to clarify the signage, the. Does the blade sign, the forty four point six five square foot blade sign count twice because it's on the corner, is that? Or are there actually two, I'm not.
Originally, there were two.
Okay.
And one of them was eliminated and replaced with a smaller blade sign. That's a directional blade sign, instead of them both saying graduate and being the full, the full forty four square feet, I think they are. One of them was reduced down to. Was reduced down to ten point nine, oh wait, to eleven square feet, reduced down to eleven square feet. And it's indicating the parking court, the drive court.
Okay, so actually, what's listed in the memo, is that not correct?
The, right. I can explain some of this, there's, and the applicant can assist to, but there's been a lot of. Iterations, the report that Jim and I wrote is based on the application that was deemed to complete. So they've been, numerous boards and they've all made suggestions and they've incorporated those designs into their suggestions. And at, before the hearings over. They will have to go through each, you know, report from Sprabs, PEC, HBC and. You know, go through the items that they are going to consider and the items they are not going to consider, so.
Okay.
That's the reason for the discrepancy.
Okay, got it.
Other questions?
I have a question, is the brick facade that you have on the front and side. It's behind Joshua, that picture, is it the same brick that you're using on the back of the building and the back wall on Bank Street?
So is that one Michael wants to answer?
Yeah, well. Everything, everything behind the Nassau Street building is, is new and it's, it's new brick to match the existing. And we, we went through some testimony in our presentation that we have been able to match that brick exactly. And we presented testimony about that. And I have the brick samples and I, I thought about dropping them off at Borough Hall, but I. I have them in my office if you want them. And you could, or we can meet at the site, we had photographs of the bricks against the existing building to show that they, they matched.
And they will be used all the way around the building, same pattern, the same.
That's what, that's what I understand, is that right, Steve?
Yeah, there's a little bit of pattern adjustment with some soldier courses that we've added based upon some suggestions of enhancing the facade. And looking at buildings around Princeton.
I thought I noticed the difference in the back, that's why I was asking, so. There is.
Yeah, some soldier courses intermixed with running Bond.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I have two. One I brought up last week, which was the ten foot setback, my concerns are two things. The ten foot setback on the. Two immediately adjacent. Buildings on Bank Street and the overall. Size of the northernmost wing as it relates to the Bank Street properties. First, I guess. I, I mentioned at the last hearing, the, the ten foot setback. And again, I looked at it just, just looking at the drawings that were presented. And I was wondering, again, Mr. Oakley, as I said last time. Couldn't that be, couldn't that courtyard be adjusted by the movement of the elevator in the stair in the corner? And that would allow the motor court to expand a little bit. And offset by the ten foot setback on that back wall. I'm just concerned about the, I, I recognize that there's a wall there now. And that's fine. The proposal is for another wall, but also a very big building up there. And so I was wondering, is, did you look further by chance at reconfiguring that courtyard and moving that wall in?
Mostly, we had looked at the alternative with the, with the six foot high fence was the, the one reducing the building construction at the back of the property. The main issue is, of course, the depth of the hotel rooms facing Chamber Street. So that sets up a position of the elevators. And also the reduction in the back would start to compromise the amount of parking we would have on site. I mean, we'd probably be looking at losing about ten parking spaces. Based upon where the structure would end.
Where, where would you lose them, would you lose them at the lower level?
At the lower level, correct, yeah.
Could the lower level?
Yeah, related to, related to the circulation down below to, you know, go around the core, loop the core with the cars and put them into valet spaces.
No, that's valid, but is, is, can the lower level still be? At the limits it is now with that first floor wall moved back in?
I mean, it's also, you know, compromising the lobby and the arrival amenity facing Chamber Street, which we're, you know, trying to build one's. Unified double height space that, you know, creates a level of excitement and uniformity on, on Chamber Street.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, I'm just, again, like I said, I'm just very concerned about that, about that wall right on the property line. And the other is the, the bulk of that northernmost wing. I mean, it's sixty five feet tall, it now is set back, what, twenty feet from that western property line?
Correct.
Yeah, and, and, you know, with windows facing obviously north with views, you know, to the northwest and to the. And to the southwest. Have you, again, this is a, this is a loaded question, I guess, have you considered possibly, and I, I hate to suggest this. Stepping that wing back? I mean, just trying to reduce the bulk as it faces the Bank Street historic properties.
Yeah, we had looked at, you know, some options, had actually moved it back from its original location. Twice and then took out those second story guest rooms. And then, you know, and looking at the sun shadow study, you know, came to the realization that. Our impact wasn't, you know, as, as significant as everybody had originally thought on a shadow generation.
Oh no, I, I agree, I agree, the shadows is very compelling, you can see that the impact is not as significant as I would have imagined. But it's the bulk, the visual bulk, as you look at it from the Bank Street properties, that, that building is. Very big and it's right on top of those houses. And, and I thought some transition, stepping it back away from the property line and rising in height would minimize that impact.
Yeah, at the cost of, you know, the number of rooms, we did change from one, one ninety one to one seventy eight, so. Yeah, we have been actively, you know, carving away where we had the opportunities to.
Okay, well.
Within, within the bulk that was permitted and, and the heights.
I understand.
If we, we can't, Stephen, we can't go any higher than what's there now, you know, we're at the, the zone limit and we need to have. Enough rooms for it to actually work. The, the, you know, it doesn't have the banquet halls, the weddings and things like that, the meeting rooms that bring in those kind of. Generation. You know, like when you compare it, it still has in terms of size, you know, it's, it's. Close to the Nassau Inn in terms of room, Nassau Inn has something like ten more rooms. But it also has ten thousand square feet of ballrooms and thirteen separate rooms where people rent out to meet and, you know, that, so. In terms of scale, it, it doesn't have that. The, the other thing is, and then just to make it very clear to you. That when, when they, when we were at, you know, we were looking at this as, hey, we got a thirty. We got a thirty two to thirty five or thirty seven foot wall on the property line now. And when we went in, we were proposing, hey, let's take the existing condition, let's not make it any worse. And that's what our initial, you know, our initial. Plan showed, we went in, you know, it was at thirty two feet, we're in, and then up on another level of like thirty five feet. We reduced it all down to thirty feet or something like that. And we said, okay, so now we've improved the condition because on the property and we shifted it in by six inches. We've improved the existing condition, it's aesthetically much better, the other wall is disgusting, it has holes, it has. Pipes on the outside, utilities on the outside. I don't know how many windows of all different shapes and sizes, this is really going to be a huge benefit. And then Sprab asked us to take a look at shifting it back and we wanted to, so if we could shift back, if we had the room. Do like that, but we, it's a safety issue, we need to have a court, a driving court actually function and work. We can't have a court where you go in, have to, and you know, taxi comes in and circles around, stop, back up, go again. And we can't have it with the, you know, we, we looked at shifting it back and making it in compliance. So when we said, okay, so we don't actually need the building, the hotel on the property line. So let's just focus on what we need there, we need the circulation to work. So then we said, well, you know, that's not a building, that's allowed in that area. So we went in and looked at the fence option. And then we looked at enclosing it and we looked at keeping the existing wall, all of those didn't trigger any additional variances, they would be. Conforming in terms of, you know, either a preexisting nonconformity or a new. Preexisting nonconformity or a new construction that had no new variance, because it's not actually a building there, it is. Auto court circulation which is allowed in that area. But from a planning perspective, from a design perspective, from a, you know, we were addressing safety from the court court. But from an impact perspective, it's much better to just enclose it and that's basically what we did. And we can open it up and remove the variance. If we could shift it in, we would have, but it creates an unsafe condition and we can't. You know, you, you, you can't come in and, and, and propose something when you know it's not going to work. The, the, the other thing is, we need to have the court function. Because the whole idea is to take the, the activity off of the street, we don't want people parking on the street or pulling up. We want a easy function, safe. Area, so people actually encouraged to come in, not to, you know, worried about every little thing. To, you know, in terms of how are they going to get in and out, we want a nice smooth movement. And so that was really driving that decision to remove the variance by just, you know, putting up a wall, having the correct circulation. So like I said, we could remove the variance, but when you take a look at the before pictures and the after pictures. It's a huge improvement, you're going from a twenty, a thirty foot wall to a twelve, it's actually twelve feet less in the lowest. And then, you know, seventeen feet or something like that, less than other areas. Not only that, it was designed for the activity. Not only that, it was designed for the activity on Chamber Street. So the building itself has a cutout. It's not a big, full, solid wall along Bank Street. The air and light in that carve out is not on Chamber Street. It's on Bank Street. I mean, a lot of this was considered. So
But it's
you know.
No, I I understand. I understand. I I just, you know, again, I I'm just not convinced that that some redesign in that area would allow it to move the wall to move forward. And the courtyard, I think the courtyard idea is great. I like the circulation. I think it's really well thought out and nicely done. But again, you know, I'm I'm not, again, not convinced that that it can't be reworked to move that wall back in. So it's not right on the property line. That's number one. And number two, again, the bulk of that that wing as it as it faces Bank Street. So and I recognize that changing that design, you'd you'd lose some rooms, but again, it's it's a very big wing and it's very close to the to the properties and it's 65 feet tall. So, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I I think.
Well, let's see, are there any other? Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, all right, Mr. Durazia?
Um, I I think we were gonna see if you if you wanted to have the, I I know some of the people from the public wanted to make.
I I certainly do. I just want to make sure the board's asked all the questions they want to ask. If there are no one else, if there's no one else on the board who would like to make a comment or ask a question, then then I'm going to open it up to the public. So Claudia, do you? Do you have, obviously, I see there are a number of people out there waiting. Can you, I guess, start by letting someone in?
I I think there were two people that actually filed exhibits and presentations.
How many were there, did you say?
Two.
Okay.
I I know that there, Tony and Nelson and Bill Gray, I believe, were the two that have filed with the board presentations.
Okay, but then I assume there are a number of other people who just want to speak to this. I don't, is it just two that want to actually?
Well, I I was just saying that I know that they want to speak, they file presentations, so.
Just for clarification, yes, Mr. Nelson did file a presentation. Mr. Gray, he was advised he's just going to have to review that with the board tonight because it was essentially testimony. It was not an exhibit to to aid the testimony. It was straight testimony. So.
So do we want to start with Mr. Nelson's presentation? Or I don't know how to make a determination on who we we let in first, but maybe we should.
Steve?
Yes.
Claudia's let in a few people. I mean, I think for clarity, it might make sense to let people comment on the presentation. If you go through another presentation, they'll lose context of this presentation. So maybe.
That's a valid point. No, that's fine. Let's do that. Okay, so the first questioner.
David Newton, why don't you go first?
Mr. Newton, before you begin, we just need to swear you in. You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
I really didn't want to go first, but since I'm put on the spot, how many minutes do I have, Mr. Chairman?
You have as many as you need, but.
I'm going to be pretty quick. Actually, I also, it's a loaded question. I I find myself in a position where I've been a resident and a real estate owner and developer and manager in Princeton since 1983. The project which I've eaten out most for was the Hamilton Jewelers Building, which me and the group of investors I work with, which we still own, 92 Nassau Street, we renovated in 1985 and 1986. And as a number of you know, I managed Palmer Square from the years 1995 until 2016. And then most recently in 2019, good timing, we purchased on Chamber Street, 16 Chamber Street, which is exactly adjacent to 2020 Nassau Street. For years, I've really been concerned about, you know, given the fact that if you take that I have some sincerity on this matter. I have always been very concerned about the appearance of Nassau Street and the buildings on Nassau Street, which I I think have a beautiful appearance. And 20 Nassau Street was always a concern as to what was going to happen there. It was a building with older offices that buying that building on an economic basis never really allowed for of any type of full renovation. And now this town has got an opportunity of seeing a wonderful reuse of that building and a chance to create something in a time when business and opportunity in this town, as well as pretty much everywhere else, are really at an all time low, nothing like I've ever seen before. And graduates come in, bought this building and created, in my view, a an enormous air of excitement. As the owner of the adjacent building, I can't do anything but give this project an enormous thumbs up. And 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 the desire for this board to approve as quickly as possible because this town needs the excitement of the extra activity that's going on here. But on the basis that you're a zoning committee and you're concerned about appearances and whatever, let me direct just one or two comments towards that. The renovation of this building, as I said, i- i- it had a little bit of a dysfunctional use to it. The type of tenants were there were pretty much, I wouldn't say exclusively, and I apologize to Mr. Zinder because he is not a mental health professional. But pretty much in the in the in the psychiatric and psych psychological spheres and related spheres. And I think with the COVID crisis and whatever, that form of tenancy has pretty much dried up because all these professionals have found that they can do their business somewhat better using Zoom. And so you've got an opportunity of maintaining the facade along Nassau Street, but also really strengthening the internal usage of of that building. And I remember taking my back mind that many of you or a number of you may remember a woman called Constance Constance Greif, Connie Greif, who was a historical consultant back in the day. She lived in Rocky Hill. She was a very strong lady, very opinionated. And and she taught me back when we did Hamilton Jewelers, the most important thing was to keep the exterior appearance. But as terms of what happens on the outside and to a smaller extent on the inside, or what happens on the inside and to a smaller extent on the outside is allow everything else in the building to modernize and and to get some type of contemporary use, whereas all the time maintaining the integrity of the streetscape. And and I don't think graduate could really be denied that in what they're designed. And once again, I really hope this board quickly approves this project and so that we can move on. As once again, this business, this town needs, needs this level of activity and the support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Harriet, go ahead. Unmute yourself first.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Flower, we just need to swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm Harriet Flower and I live at 32 Bank Street. And I'd just like to read a statement on my own behalf and on behalf of my husband, Michael Flower. While we fully understand the motives for building a new hotel in downtown Princeton, we write to raise substantive questions about the design presented to your board. We urge the zoning board to look beyond the polished rhetoric of graduate hotels lengthy PowerPoint presentation to take note of the substance and impact of the present proposal. The refurbishment of the 20 Nassau Street building as a hotel makes perfect sense. Graduate Hotels has done a good job with other such renovation projects near university campuses. By contrast, the demolition of the industrial style building on Chamber Street and its replacement with a far larger, completely new building that includes an underground parking garage raises serious issues. This new building is simply too large for the space and in no way approximates the structure it is replacing. The large entrance hall translates into more than five stories for the building overall. No other building that this large abuts a residential district that borders on the central business district. There is good reason why existing zoning laws simply would not permit such a structure. The proposed plan clearly shows the great care Graduate Hotels has put into designing every aspect of the front of the hotel on Chamber Street and the side on Nassau Street. This very attention to detail is in stark contrast to what they envisioned on Bank Street, which was evidently simply not their concern. They planned this hotel without any regard for the unique historical designation of Bank Street itself, which presents one of Princeton's best preserved late 19th and early 20th century streetscapes. On the Bank Street side, their design is both brutalist and minimalist in every sense. It is completely at odds with what anyone now sees as they enter Bank Street to view the rows of fine matching historical houses on an intimate residential scale. Slide 121 reveals the problems that we on Bank Street have had with Graduate Hotels over this past year. Many long meetings have resulted in only minimal tweaks to obvious flaws in their original design. The simple fact is that the architects have not been willing to make substantive changes to address the concerns of their future neighbors or to take account of the historical nature of Bank Street. By contrast, when we renovated our small house at 32 Bank Street, which was built in 1865 and we did this in 2016, every choice on the outside was dictated by an absolute requirement to maintain the historical look of the street. A requirement we gladly complied with despite the extra expenses and time to acquire permits. Graduate Hotels is asking to be exempted from such processes that we all have had to comply with as property owners in this neighborhood. In addition, parking will remain a problem that is only partially addressed by making Bank Street a residence only parking zone. The number of parking spaces proposed is too few for the size of the proposed hotel. Here again, a smaller hotel would allow for present parking design to be much more appropriate. Similarly, the present hotel entrance could also be made smaller. It is the decision to include parking spots for nine cars that makes the space where guests will check into the hotel so tight. Seven parking spaces in this entrance area would make everything much easier. Meanwhile, it will remain tempting for taxis and Uber drivers to cut through Bank Street to make a convenient right turn into the entrance to the hotel garage and drop off area rather than an awkward left turn across traffic on Nassau Street. Reversing the one way direction of Bank Street would greatly help to preserve the traditional character of the street. In conclusion, we urge the board to reject the variances requested and to make clear to Graduate Hotels that their design for a new hotel extension that flanks Chambers and Bank Street is too large for the available space and not in harmony with the legally designated historical character of the neighborhood. A medium sized tastefully designed boutique hotel would enhance the neighborhood in each of the three adjacent streets. But a hotel that is too big will have a distinctly negative impact on the whole area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tony.
No, it's my, it's my wife. She's going to go first.
Well, I just have a small letter as well.
Ma'am, we just need to get your name for the record and we need to swear you in.
I'm Francois Nelson.
And you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I just would like to address problems that are directly related to our houses since we are the most close, the closest to the six story hotel. But first, I have some questions about the zoning rules and regulations. Are they put in place to organize and preserve the urban landscape? Is the reason for 10 foot setback limiting the height of new buildings and limiting the FAR, the overall benefit of the town? Is it meant, among other things, to assure that the scale and the aesthetic of the existing fabric is not destroyed? But when a new building is being proposed in a historical neighborhood? As one of our neighbors stated, our houses were built when people understood and respected natural elements, seasonal lights and scale. The result is a pleasing urban street. Unfortunately, now the driving motor is generally economic and previous considerations are manipulated to be profitable, profitable. I realize the hotel is a positive addition to the town and we are not opposed to the project, but we are concerned about the validity of the design and the scale is massive. This is to ensure a maximum of rooms when it could have been more sensitive to the overall scale and height of both Chamber and Bank Street by stepping down to the height of the firebox. This would not only satisfy the scale, but also address the concern raised by residents of Bank Street about the loss of light and shadows created by the proposed building as it stands. These steps could also accommodate green roof that would benefit more than pigeons and helicopters. Every owner of this street had to satisfy with zoning rules, as we just heard, when renovating our houses. So I don't understand why the hotel doesn't have to comply. The height and size of the proposed building as it stands on the property line will rob us from light in winter sunlight. When it wouldn't, following the setback and hide rules, reduce the problem. The houses have tiny urban backyard and luckily, a large maple tree grants us some with some greenery. Will it be replaced by a tree of a large enough caliber to assure us of a comparable foliage? Could this be done if setback requirement were met? The proposal of the driveway, well, no, I'm going, so my concern basically are the scale, the height, the setback and the aesthetic of the building as it stands.
Thank you.
Might I volunteer?
Sure.
Kenny, would you give us your address first?
Certainly. 24 Moore Street.
And you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I I just like to speak. I just like to speak in favor of the application. And my motivation, I started a group, you know, maybe eight years ago, Walkable Princeton. Our motivation was to encourage walkable urbanism in Princeton, to make the walkable lifestyle not a luxury good for the privileged few like myself. I live just on the other side of the Central Business District. But something available broadly. And to return to our past, a past when we built buildings to the lot line and five stories tall, without concern where houses like on mine on Moore Street, where I don't, I don't have ten-foot barriers to either my neighbors. I know on Bank Street, none of the houses are separated, I don't think, by ten feet. And the advantage of that, there's a trade-off. Either we have density, I want to speak in favor of density, and I think this hotel looks, is that density. Either we have density or we have sprawl. And I, my motivation is fundamentally environmental. And every person who stays in a hotel room on Chambers Street is someone who walks to restaurants to their destination. Right now, most of the, we all know this, most of the visitors coming to town are staying in hotels on Route One and clogging our streets. We cannot keep density out of downtown Princeton and think that decreases parking needs, that decreases traffic, that decreases activity. This is the one place where we live in downtown Princeton, the one place where people can live a walkable lifestyle. And so I just want to speak in favor of that. You know, I don't have a dog in the fight in terms of boutique hotels, but each room added there is one room less added in a sprawling way out on Route One or up on two oh six north or wherever else hotels go. So thank you. Thank you very much for your attention.
You're welcome.
May I go?
Sure.
Go ahead.
My name is Kirk Huckle. I'm the owner of a building at eleven Chambers Street next to the Nassau Christian Center and opposite the proposed vehicular entrance. I own a dental practice.
Before you continue, we just want to swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have a three-doctor practice, and my questions are for myself and other businesses on Chambers Street. The owners of the business are obviously concerned about dust, noise, disruption of the ability to conduct business and specifically vehicular and pedestrian traffic. How many years is the demolition and construction of this hotel projected to take? And will cranes and trucks be permitted to be working on Chambers Street? And what assurances can you provide to sure owners of the businesses on Chambers Street that vehicular and pedestrian traffic will not be impeded during the construction, thus preventing access to our businesses during the project?
Okay, I'm not sure who we have that we can talk to about this. I know that just generally before I'll turn to a consultant and I'll ask to see who we have available. But I know this is a very experienced team. They're used to, you know, construction projects like this. They understand completely all the logistics that need to go into it, all the safety measures, all of the precautions. And this is not a unique situation to them. So we have a very experienced team. And I'm gonna turn, probably, I think we, I think we have our contractor available. Let's see, is he on there?
He's in the attendees.
Alexander, is that who's there?
Yeah.
Okay. Alexander Craig, could we bring him in from?
Sure.
Should be there.
Alexander, are you, oh, there you are. Okay, can you tell us who you are and what you do?
Yes, I am, the name is Alexander Craig. I am the Senior Vice President, Operations Manager for Hunter Roberts Construction Group. So I am the principal in charge of the construction manager for the Graduate Hotel Project.
And can we have you turn in?
Yes, Mr. Craig, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So there's a couple of questions. Did you hear the questions regarding construction?
Yes.
To repeat it?
No, I believe I heard the question, or the questions. I'll try to address them. If I miss any, please remind me. First, overall duration of the project, right now, we're estimating at about twenty-four to twenty-six months. Obviously, that's not, you know, the demolition will not take that long. That's the overall duration. During the construction process, we have to monitor dust, noise, vibration. All be done by a third-party firm with parameters set forth by the environmental consultants to monitor those things, to make sure we're controlling those. And if there's exceedances, you know, things will be stopped. And so that'll all be controlled by predetermined, you know, allowable readings. Regarding Chambers Street, the way that the site will be constructed or the way we are currently anticipating it, there will be partial closures of chambers, but there'll always have to be a lane open for traffic. Obviously, this is not a plan that's been a hundred percent approved. It's just a preliminary logistics plan to how we look at operationally building the facility, knowing that we want to keep any operation other than, you know, the ability not to do it any other way off of Bank Street, keep construction equipment off of Bank Street. We don't have access to the gun lot. So it'll be constructed from within the footprint and then the sidewalk adjacent to the building and the lane adjacent to the building, but only within the footprint of the building, and the lane will always be maintained.
Thank you, Alex.
How about, how about pedestrian traffic, though? Will that ever be compromised?
On the opposite side, because the sidewalk on Chambers is so small up against the building, that sidewalk will be closed. We would request that that sidewalk be closed, but the other side will always be open. Crosswalks will be put in, flagmen will be present when cranes or deliveries are there. Nassau Street will not. We'll utilize a sidewalk bridge like you see in New York City for overhead protection that'll be lit for pedestrian access up and down Nassau Street.
Thank you.
I'm not sure who might be next, but I know Jonathan Haley wanted to speak.
Hi, good evening. Sorry about the lighting. Thanks for the opportunity. I just, Jonathan Haley and I am proprietor in the building at twenty Nassau and also I actually rent an office space in that building. And so Pablo and his team have been landlord of mine for a bit. So I just wanted to speak briefly about.
Mr. Haley, before you continue, we just need to swear you in. Do you swear firm any testimony you give will be truthful?
I do, yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I just wanted to say that my experience with Pablo and his team has been tremendous. And being both, as I mentioned, a proprietor in their property as well as a renter in their, in their office space. When I first heard that Graduate was taking on this project, I looked quickly into what their mission was and got very excited about the potential. And it, it is very obvious to me that they're highly dependent upon the success of the community, the university, and the visitors working in unison. So I hear the concerns coming up and I am personally alleviated by what I've seen is they're living that, that mission. And I know that their success is dependent upon those parties working well together. So as concerns come up and as concerns have come up throughout the pandemic, for myself and for my business, Pablo and his team have been a tremendous resource and support tool for us. So I have a lot of confidence in, in their approach. So I just wanted to put my hand up in favor of this project for the town, for the businesses in this town and its people and its visitors. So thank you.
Thank you.
Are there others who want to speak who maybe you could help me out by putting, you know, putting your hand up? I think if you're in the, if you haven't been promoted to being on the main screen here, there are a number of names, about nine or ten people. And I'm not sure if you're just observing or.
We'd be more than happy, I mean, to go next. I mean, we're at nineteen Bank Street and this is Emery and Diego Salmon.
And may I ask you both if you would raise your right hand? You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I mean, from, from early morning, so I'd like to read a statement and then we have a few questions at the end. But from early morning, drilling to block sidewalks and street lanes, many resident will be inconvenienced by construction of the graduate hotel that will last many months, we just heard twenty-two, twenty-four to twenty-six months, and will cause ongoing suffering in Bank Street residents' work and home lives. Most states and city laws specify that residents have a right to quiet enjoyment of their home, which includes limits of excessive noise from nearby property under construction. The Princeton-New Jersey Noise Ordinance is a nuisance code that prohibits loud, continuous, or excessive noise. However, the code does not establish measurable noise standard. The developer, therefore, defer to the New Jersey State Noise Code for guidance on maximum permissible noise levels. So I mean, this, I believe there is an exhibit that was also that you already have about the noise and we heard also a gentleman earlier. The New Jersey State Noise Code identifies specific decibel levels for various times of days. Any noise that exceeds the designated decibel level is considered a nuisance to the surrounding community. Construction equipment like a jackhammer or pile driver can easily violate this level and as a result, must be permitted for use with the city so local officials are aware when construction noise will be excessive. We want to make sure Bank Street residents will be notified of any loud work going which require a permit, especially as working hours can extend from seven AM to ten PM and are shortened on weekends. When bothered by excessive noise, will documented by filing a formal complaint with the township. This way, any unpermitted noise will be investigated and will get more details about how long any permitted noise is expected to last. Construction near our home isn't just a noise issue as a nearby work site will mean blocked sidewalks, damaged roads, and even structural damage to our homes. Heavy-duty work can cause vibration in the ground strong enough to damage our properties. Vibration damage can appear in the form of cracks on concrete patios, slab floors, door or window frames, and in a corner of a room. Most insurers routinely deny coverage under homeowners policies by invoking earth movement exclusion. We'll like, we'll likely need to work with an attorney to pursue a claim against the developer, especially if the damage is estimated at over ten thousand dollars. We're planning to document the current state of our homes in the event of any structural damage due to the construction. We'll keep track of the damage itself and equipment and procedures used at the nearby construction site as well as use of systemographic to monitor vibrations. In what I like also to talk is a little bit about the dust. So the dust at the construction site can take many different forms and the materials released into the air can be made of rock, wood, chemical, and even metal, creating a potentially lethal dust that can spread for a very long distance. In the months to come, we'll see or smell poor air quality from the construction. It will be important to close our doors and windows. Potentially, the windows will need to be sealed to keep the tiny airborne dust particles from entering our homes. It's essential that we work with the township and state regulators to verify that the construction or demolition projects are following the local laws and regulations. Dust released into the environment is a significant concern for both the workers and Bank Street residents who live near the construction site. This is especially true for anyone that could be vulnerable to dust, such as people with asthma or COPD, or even today with COVID-19. As we discuss above, construction dust can contain harmful particles. So keeping it from being released into the air is a crucial component of public health.
And this is, this is Emery, and I would like to specifically address the height and the bulk of the building. We didn't really see an image of the north facade. I know we've talked a lot about the side on Bank Street, but the north facade does have windows. And my concern is in terms of privacy and just, just the overall look. So we will have windows looking directly into our back garden and in fact, directly into the house. So the terracing of the walls, really, I believe that was the HPC suggestion, would significantly alleviate both the privacy issue and also the light deprivation. We looked at the shadow study and it would definitely, the back of our garden is definitely affected by the lack of light caused by the substantial bulk of that building. So really, you know, in summary, I think the main issues in addition to the, the construction concerns are the, the traffic increase on Nassau, noise, general noise from the parking, noise from the hotel restaurant, noise from the guests, the decrease in sunlight, potential parking on Bank Street, loss of privacy, loss of the, right now, we have a beautiful view of the university tower. It reminds me of my hometown of Oxford and that's, that will go. And, and as well as the, yeah, as I mentioned, the privacy issue. So those are, those are our primary concerns.
Lori, would you like to go next?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Lori Raybon, Vice President of Palmer Square and the Nassau Inn. And I just wanted to take an opportunity this evening to talk about, from a.
Karen?
Yes, I just need to swear you in. Lori, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm sorry about that. I just wanted to take a moment this evening to, to say how excited we are in, in the, you know, merchant community to have the Graduate Hotels be coming to town. I think that they offer a very quality hotel experience. I heard someone earlier speak about the depths they go to make sure that the, the community is involved, the visitors are involved. They, you know, they build around the town in which they will be residing and they become a central part of it. I welcome the, the competition and hopefully it will always be on good terms. But I think that we've got a great opportunity with the expansion of hotel availability of fall service, another fall service hotel in Princeton to take back part of that, that market share that has gone out to Route One for so many years to hotels that trade on the Princeton name yet are not located in Princeton. And we're really looking forward to, to working with Graduate on welcoming them into the town, having their visitors become. visitors become visitors to our retail merchants, perhaps taking office space in some of the other local office buildings, and really welcoming them to the community. I think it says great things, particularly during this economic time that we're going through, and the difficulties that people are having, that they are looking forward and wanting to make such a great investment in the Princeton community, because they believe in it as much as we all do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bunting?
Yes, my name is Sam Bunting. I'm a local resident.
Hey. What?
Mr. Bunting.
I'm just not sure exactly why, because I thought Bill Gray was supposed to go first, but he hasn't. So, I've got my set of questions, and I got presentations after that. So, I'm going to ask Steve if I can do the questions. So, I get questions for everybody, every witness. So.
Tony, mute yourself.
If I have.
Tony, will you?
I muted him.
Mr. Bunting, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, apologies to Tony. I'll try to be brief. Some of the points that I've made, some of the points that I want to make have been probably expressed more eloquently by David Newton and others. And I'm a local resident, and my involvement with the town has often been in terms of traffic and transportation, serving on several municipal committees. And I'm very enthusiastic about this application, because it's the opportunities that it provides for visitors to Princeton to access our downtown on foot and using bicycles. In particular, I note that the applicant graduate with Tals is going to make available a free bike-share system, but more importantly than that, the proposal would make available a substantial number of residences in a very close proximity to our downtown. And I think that that is extremely, extremely important, because something that we've seen is that our downtown businesses are struggling through competition with online retail and big-box stores. And for our downtown to survive, we need to have activities centers, such as this potential large hotel, which would provide a large customer base right on the doorstep of our local merchants. I am strongly enthusiastic about the idea of providing that customer base to our downtown retail community. I appreciate that there may be some impacts from the proposed hotel on the neighbors, but on the other hand, there are impacts with the current situation as well, because what we have is a strong economy in Princeton, centered on Princeton University, which is attracting a lot of visitors to our town. And those visitors right now are staying on Route One Hotels. Makes no sense at all, because it means that surrounding townships are getting the trade, the ratables and the occupancy fees, and we're just getting the traffic. That is not a deal which makes sense. So, to the extent that we could have 190 rooms, I understand that the proposal has already been done sized to 178 rooms. I think that there are some very strong public benefits there, in terms of activating the downtown, and in terms of reducing some of the traffic flow into the town, which we've seen. So, for those reasons, I'm supportive of the project and the proposed use. I also have to say that what the applicant is proposing is an absolutely beautiful building, which preserves the existing historic structure on 2 Nassau Street, and provides a very tasteful contextual addition to, on the side, which I think really enhances the streetscape, and would make me proud to be a resident of Princeton.
Thank you.
I think it's Carlos Rodriguez. I'm not sure if I have him.
I think he wants to speak after the.
Oh, you're right. You're right. You're right.
Let me, I think Bill Gray is actually going to go next. Would like to go next.
Okay, sorry, my mistake.
No, no, it's no problem. Then I'll go, and then I'll summarize with the PowerPoint.
So, Bill needs a screen share, I believe, Claudia.
It's allowed to share the screen.
Hello?
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
We just need to swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
And if you could give us your address as well?
14 Bank Street.
Thank you.
A couple of comments. The question that the business owner asked on, from Chambers Street, was answered. The board and GPNJ took some time to answer his question about pedestrian traffic and access to his business. But also, Harriet Flower, who was the first speaker, read a letter, and there were several questions within the letter that no one stopped to answer. Francois's did the same thing, had questions, no one answered. Diego and Emery had questions too. So, I'm wondering what the process is. So, four people spoke, but really, their questions went into the ether. So, how, is this the process, Steve Cohen?
Well, it's, I think, I think if the applicant, if the questioner didn't feel that they, that they, their questions were answered, they should have mentioned it. We can go back and hear those questions again and get them answered.
Okay, then that's up to them. Thank you. I have a slide. How do I do this, to share the screen? I hit screens. Ah, there we go. Well, it's not an exhibit, apparently. I don't know what the definition of exhibit is. So, this is basically what Bank Street residents have been thinking about for 12 months now, since our first meeting with Pablo. There's a number of issues. Loss of sunlight is one of them, the shadow created by the large building. There's a lot of issues with noise and headlights and sound coming up the ramp, down into the parking deck, and then down into the parking deck, the drop-off area. Several people talked about reducing the height of the north end of the building, and the setback is a big issue for Bank Street residents. Another issue is the back door on Bank Street. No one's really addressed that. And we have concerns about pedestrian traffic on crossing Chambers and Nassau at the corner of Chambers and Nassau Street. The drop-off zone is going to create traffic. There's going to be backups more than usual. That's all on there. So, I'll begin. So, the Historic Commission had some reservations, and Elizabeth Kim spoke early about them. I pulled some of them out of her memo to the zoning board. And part of it is that they understand that it would be advantageous to reevaluate the floor plans and attempt to maximize the building footprint, and possibly reduce the building height, or receive the building footprint from adjacent residential and office properties. The expanded and increased height of the new hotel will impact the amount of natural sunlight to the properties and streets along Bank and Chambers Street and nearby property, they said. The height increase from 37 to 60 feet, which I believe is 65 feet, will make a significant impact to Chambers Street, the property immediately to the north, which is the old firehouse, and to the Bank Street neighborhood, especially the residents that share common property lines. The zoning board has a mandate, has a job tonight to make a big decision. And I really liked the positive comments from the many people at the beginning of the comment period. We do need another hotel in town. We do need more people coming into town to spend time in the businesses. We want an active community, and the Bank Street neighbors certainly support all of that. We are not against a hotel over on Chambers Street. So, the zoning board knows this, but they have to think about what they're approving tonight, or not approving, based on everything, every detail they've looked at. And I'm hoping that they've seen all the details they need to make an informed decision. And we just don't want the decision to be made, to be taken lightly by the board members. What happens at the end of the meeting will affect Bank Street residents and future Bank Street residents for a very, very long time. Early on, in some of the, some of the presentations by GPNJ, they started going through this FAR comparison to kind of let us know that what they're planning to do is within kind of the average of what's going on downtown, Central Business District. So, they showed a series of slides depicting different levels of FAR variances, or buildings that are, and properties that are over the 1.5 FAR. So, back in 1926, 1939, this is going to focus on Palmer Square right now, these next few slides. Palmer Square was completed by 1939. And at that time, there was no zoning board. There was no FAR. So, the buildings around Palmer Square, on Palmer Square, were created without any rules. So, when the FAR came into existence, I'm not sure, I asked about a date, when the FAR rule came into existence, immediately they were, the FAR rule applied to them, according to Josh Zinder's slides. So, here's the comparison that we were shown. It starts off with this slide, Slide 99. And then, the orange buildings, everything orange is a FAR over 1.5 in the entire downtown business district. And I'd like to concentrate on Palmer Square in particular, because it's the closest to, to the proposed hotel. And it's used as a reference for their FAR variance. So, the next slide they would show us was this one, and everything turns from orange to a pinkish color, and that indicates all the buildings that are FAR between 3.0 and 4.0, which includes the buildings now in Palmer Square, except for the post office building. They also didn't shade their own hotel building over on the left. I did it for them tonight to represent a building that's also between 3.0 and 4.0 FAR, just as a reminder. So, I have a question about Palmer Square. And I actually think that the slides presented don't exactly show what's real. So, I'd like to know what the total land area in Palmer Square is, and how that number was put into the formula for the FAR that resulted in a slide showing that Palmer Square is between 3.0 and 4.0 FAR. That's a question, and can anybody answer that? How the calculation was done for that part of town, used as a comparison for the variance they're requesting tonight?
Josh, I guess you put together the survey?
Sure. The Palmer Square, taken as a whole, if you calculate it as a whole, is very difficult to calculate FAR. For, the way we calculated it is, we looked at the individual buildings and how they sit on their sites, because an FAR is a relationship of the lot of a building compared to the square footage of the building that it occupies. And so, we took the lot that each one of those buildings occupied, okay, meaning street to street. Okay, so Palmer Square, as a development, includes the streets. It includes the, what you perceive as the public open space. So, we allotted the public, the square to the post office building, and we went and we allotted each one of those buildings, compared the square footage of those buildings to the lot that it occupied. If anything, you know, you might look at the residences of Palmer Square, and, you know, in that case, because they have an FAR of three, because they're on top of a parking deck, you know, how that calculates, you know, maybe that should have been read as well. We tried to be conservative with how we approached this, and I feel that what we've represented is accurate, based on the density that it showed.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'd like to just ask a question. Excuse me, Mr. Gray. Derek, do you agree with that interpretation of the FAR?
I mean, that's the definition of FAR. You take the exterior measurement of the building, divide it by the lot area. The green square there is owned by the town, and it's not part of Palmer Square, although it's used. It looks like part of Palmer Square. So, I mean, most of those buildings front right on the street, and they go to the zero lot line. So, you can kind of tell by looking at a lot of the buildings downtown, if they're two or three stories, they're over the one and a half FAR, just by looking at their footprint. So, I mean, Josh is correct in his methodology. I didn't check the math, but I mean, it's.
No, it makes sense what you said. Okay, thank you.
Can we allow?
Well, Mr. Gray, are you still?
Yeah, I have a couple more.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
So, FAR has come up, and several references have been made to reduce the structure size to comply with the FAR. It will resolve some of the parking issues. It'll certainly resolve the visual and psychological impact of the brutal 65-foot wall directly against Bank Street properties. And lowering the FAR and the structure saves an unspecified amount of direct sunlight on Bank Street. And therefore, I think a new shadow study should be made to establish what that impact is on the reduction in the building size. I'm assuming that that will be done. So, setback's a big issue. There was a kind of an argument early on in the presentations about setback, and our setback along Bank Street and the proposed hotel was compared to the parking garage, the Spring Street garage, and the residents and buildings on North Tulane Street. However, everything on North Tulane Street is setback 10 feet or more. And it's not a historic zone, and it's also a zone differently as a residence and business. So, this is what the setback looks like currently. the setback looks like currently behind Bank Street with the existing building and then the old firehouse and, and the rest of the buildings down the street. So you can see from this picture that the red line is the zero setback that exists, the as of right, zero setback that they're asking for. And the green line indicates the property line, fence line. There's considerably more than 10 feet between the property line and the old firehouse. A little bit more than 10 feet behind the next building. And then there's an old garage that's pretty much on the property line, but we can talk about that if anybody wants to talk about it. I don't know if it has any significance to the, to the matter of setback that we're trying to get from the zoning. So pardon my graphics. But the, the, this is the, the red lines are the property lines existing today. And the setback, the white lines are greater than 10 feet from the old firehouse. So you, you can see the distance between the back of the firehouse and the, and the back of the yellow house, which is 15 and 17. Yeah, 15 and 17 Bank Street. So they have a lot of room. They have a lot of open air and sky. That's what it looks like from a similar position. This was taken from the backyard of 17 Bank Street. The firehouse is on the left and the brick building in the back is the zero setback current building. Another view. And then a long view looking down the property line. So everything, everything is in compliance, except when we get to the, the variance that, that's being requested tonight. Michael Floyd asked for a rendering or drawing or something of the north face of the building and it wasn't really provided. And, and there is very limited, it's a very, we haven't seen much about the north side of the building. So I, I drew a little bit of wall that's going to be there after the construction is complete of the new hotel. So at some point, it would be nice to see a rendering of the north side of the building and, and with the property in the background like you see right now. The sunlight and shadow. We, the people on Bank Street have a very limited amount of sunlight to begin with, but we bought our houses knowing that they're close together. And we exist that way. And, and the shadow study was done. And to us, sunlight is precious. And you can read this, but I'll read it out loud too. Bank Street residents have sunlight coming into their houses directly and by reflection off adjacent houses. The total sunlight coming into our homes throughout the day cannot be accurately depicted on a shadow study. The nuance of the movement of the sunlight slowly moving through our homes, either directly or by reflection, can't be put on a chart or a study. But the expectation of sunlight for us is very real. We must not lose our precious light. The following slides are going to show part of the sun shadow study that was presented. There were two different types of studies that were presented. One was shown at the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. And that was a little bit different than the slideshow that you saw tonight. I'll just show you an example of the earlier slideshow. A lot of the slides are in 30 minute increments. As Brooke pointed out, she did a very good presentation actually of that and explained it pretty thoroughly. And almost had me convinced that everything was going to be okay. But the winter slides in particular, they only, there was only four times, four snapshots taken.
Thank you very much.
Shadows during winter.
And how's the thing going in the hearings that are behind my shoulder here?
Somebody needs to mute. Tony, you need to mute. Okay, anyway. Shadow creep. It's something that I, I named it shadow creep. It's, it's that slow movement of the sun across the sky from sunrise to sunset. We don't notice it. It doesn't come in snapshots. It doesn't move 30 minutes at a time or 60 minutes at a time. It's there. It's just there all the time with us, the sun and the shadow. So this is the earlier diagram that was presented to the Historic Commission. And it kind of shows all of the different times of day as the shadows move across the plane of buildings are. In a way, it's a better representation. You can kind of imagine how the shadows are moving slowly throughout the day. It gets a little darker in the fall as, as depicted here on this slide. And then in the winter, that's winter. And this is with the new hotel building on the slot, on the part on the right side. I, I'm going to go through these quickly and, and Brooke did this earlier, but the, the blue, blue areas are the changes are the added shadow or what I like to call the, the sunlight that we've lost at, at, at these different moments when these slides were made or, or the, the snapshots were made. So this is, I'm considering it sunlight lost. And we don't, we don't really get it back once the building is built. So here it's represented at 8:00 AM in spring. Okay. I'll just go through them slowly. You can look at them again. I, I'm actually speaking to the board now. If they can just look, look at them, take it all in. Think about living here on Bank Street and, and all of the differences between 8:00 AM and 8:30, don't just go like that. They last three, that half hour through that hour period. So even at 10:30 on this slide, there's some sunlight loss in the backyard of 17 Bank Street. It was also pointed out that at some point we gain light on Bank Street, but I think it was really, the light gain was only in the gun parking lot. There was no light gained on the residences on the, on Bank Street. So here again, we're losing some light behind between 15 and 13 Bank Street in the backyard. The roof area of Tony's house, 11 and 13, they live in that part of the upper floors and, and they lose the light. They still have the light lost shortly after, or an hour or so after sunrise. It just remains there. And here's that creeping sunlight that Brooke mentioned, growing into the gun parking lot, which doesn't really help us. There's still shadow on the back of 11 and 13 and in the backyard of 13 and 15. There it is again. It's getting better. Fall is pretty much the same. That shadow is coming across Bank Street to 10 Bank Street. And it looks like into the driveway of 12 Bank Street. And that wasn't there before. So it is coming across Bank Street. Here's more shadow on the backs of the houses between 11 and 17. Okay, winter. So there are all these slides, different snapshots for the other seasons, but during the winter, there are only four snapshots that were taken for this study that were presented to us. So as I said before, the incremental snapshots leave out a lot of the slow movement of the sun and, and the shadows. And, and especially during the winter. And, and this is what we're living with. We're living with the loss of direct sunlight and that affects our psyche throughout all those minutes, all those hours every day. And it's significant. It's not something that, according to some people have said, it, it, it looks okay. So the yellow dots, circles are the slides that were provided. The sun rises at 7:15 on the winter solstice. And we could have seen the eight o'clock, the red circles are the missing slides, snapshots. We could have seen eight o'clock. We could have seen 8:30, but we weren't presented with it. 9:30 is missing. 10:30 is missing. And I think the reason there's only four slides for the winter slideshow is, is for a very specific reason. And that's to not show us everything that, that, not show the board what is really happening during the winter. And I think, I think we have a right to see the shadow study with, with more pictures, especially during the winter. So there's the four slides that we have in the winter study. And those are the squares representing the missing slides that are pretty significant. And then this is the summer. These are the summer slides, 10 summer slides. When you kind of want shadow and, but there's not much shadow because the sun is at 74 degrees above the horizon, as opposed to 26 degrees above the horizon midwinter. So there's winter. Now the shadows on the right hand side of the diagram are reaching all the way down to 17, 19, 21, 23 Bank Street. The last shadow is on the back of 23 Bank Street. So it's gone more than halfway down the street. Similar thing at 10:00 AM. And if we, if we imagine the slow creep of the shadow between nine and 10 and not just the increment. So by 11:00 AM, it's good. And that's one of the slides that, that was chosen to present. There was a lot of talk about mass. It's a big concern. Harriet spoke of it. Francois spoke of it. Diego and Anne Marie spoke of it. And I, I, I'm going to speak of it now. The mass of the building is very large for its location. Here's the, here's what they're requesting tonight. They're proposing six stories and, and it only allows five stories. Everyone knows that. So I do have questions regarding this slide and I'd actually like them answered. So this is a slide of the stacking of the floors and in an earlier, in the last meeting, Steve Oakley mentioned something about a double height first floor. So I, I, I tried to assume that the double height first floor was the, the high yellow area at the bottom of the building. And then I wonder where the six stories come from that they're proposing and is it the double height first floor and then all the floors above that? Is that?
Yeah, we, we, we are actually not proposing six stories. We're proposing five stories.
Oh, that changed.
Yeah, the, the, so, so.
But it's the same diagram.
This, yes, because the, I'll just explain it very quickly.
I, I would like to speak to the engineer maybe.
Well, I, I'll just explain it. Then you can ask the question. The design follows the existing building. So when you look at Nassau Street, it's a double height first floor. Then one, two, three, four stories above that. And then there's a basement below. That's the exact design that continues through the building. The first floor has some mezzanine spaces in some areas in the existing. And that same design was carried forward, forward for some, you know, back office and utilities. It, it does not meet the definition of story and is not considered a story. In fact, whether it's there or not, does not change the volume, the height or anything of the building. It's a mezzanine section. It's not a story.
Where is the mezzanine on this diagram?
Well, there's some in the front. There's some in the back and it's shown in, it's, it's shown in the floor plans, which were part of.
Can you show me a slide of that?
Let's see.
What you're trying to explain? While you're doing that, I'd like to comment on what you said. You're saying that the existing building has a double height first floor and then four floors above it, but it, it isn't as high as the building that you're proposing. So it's not the same. You, you're trying to equate it with the existing building, but there's a, depending on who says it, difference between 65 feet and is it 32 feet, the old building or is it 37 feet? The number's been bouncing back and forth. Nobody's pinned it down. So anyway, what I'm getting at is that your description of the old building doesn't, that it's the same as the new building. It just can't be right because the new building is so much higher.
That's not right. That's not correct. So, so let me, let me give you an example. Sangre Coffee came in and it removed the mezzanine. It didn't change that building to be a different number of stories. It's still five stories. It's under 65 feet. The new part is five stories under 65 feet. I don't know how else I can explain it. I mean, that's.
Oh, you were talking about the, the height of 20 Nassau Street, the front building facing Nassau Street. You weren't talking about the central and north end of the proposed hotel as being similar.
Yeah, I was talking about the existing Nassau Street building. I'm sorry if that was confusing. Yeah, I was, so, so yes.
Okay. So, but, but the point is we're trying to get the north end of the building lowered. So.
And by the way, the north end that you're all talking about is not within the setback. Everything that we've been talking about is 10 foot setback in. The only, the only section that is within the 10 foot setback is that 20 foot area. Just to be clear, because people are saying different things and it just, it's getting confusing because.
I'm, I'm hoping that the board is, is maybe has some more questions about this. Because the residents shouldn't be the only ones asking all these questions tonight. There were only a handful of questions from the board members. And I think there should be more input before a decision is made, more questions to the, to GPNJ about what they're, what they're proposing. It's not just about a variance. It's about, it's about what will exist when the project is finished. So there it is. And then some of the neighbors, we, we looked at this chart and this. Well, this is the north side of the building actually. Oh, no.
Yeah, that's the north elevation.
It is, but it has a sign. Okay, anyway. So there you are, Michael Floyd. There's your north face of the building that you asked about before.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I, I do want to say one thing, but the back portion room is taken out, just so you know.
So what does it look like now? There's a straight line down from, can, I don't know if you can see my cursor.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that line goes down.
Up a little more.
Nope, cuts across to create the 20 foot high court enclosure.
Yeah, yeah.
So it goes down to about the 19 foot level, which is a line on this.
Correct.
Correct, correct. I just wanted to point it out because this is the original, you know, the original, and we took out that last. The second story is removed. The only thing that is there is that 19, 20 foot, approximately 20 foot area that's part of the court.
Okay. So I'm not an architect or an engineer and I don't know what average grade means. Can you tell me? Can you explain what that is? Because it seems like the measurements of the front and the back of the building start in different places. Average grade is mentioned over on the left hand side of the diagram, near the bottom left corner. Average grade is mentioned over on the left-hand side of the diagram, near the bottom left corner.
I believe the, the average grade is if you go all around the building. All sides and you look at the grade at every point, you take the average.
And that's the slope of the land?
Correct, yeah, the site has about a six-foot slope from, you know, Nassau Street to where we end on Chambers.
And when you.
And the existing building on the corner of Nassau and Chambers is fifty-six feet high. So as we extend those floor levels, we're within the sixty-five foot height.
Okay, when you're, when you're. What you're, where is the foundation for the north side of the building as it relates to the average grade then? Is it, it's. It's not really shown there. The street level is where the blue line is that I put in, the blue horizontal line at the bottom. That's the street, Chamber Street level, and there doesn't seem to be, is that where the?
You see on the, on the right, there's, it, well, so this is where, where, we're matching the Nassau Street existing level, starting at level two. But because of the grade, our Chamber Street new addition has to be lower. Because you have to be able to enter from where the grade height is at those locations. So on the right-hand side of the page, you actually see basement with a C in parentheses. And you see level one with the C in parentheses, and you see mezzanine with a C in parentheses. So the C was just our designation for Chamber Street. And then on the left side, you see the basement with the two in parentheses, or I'm sorry, basement within. Level one within in parentheses and mezzanine within in parentheses. And then you'll notice that once we get to level two, there's no designation because that's where everything aligns. Because we're trying to improve upon what the building was originally, where there was all these different levels. And so we're trying to make one unified level two between the Nassau Street building and the Chamber Street building. And so this is our way of mitigating between the change in grade and when we're able to actually meet, meet that. But even where at level, even at this lowest level, we're still below sixty-five feet. So no matter where you are around the building, even at its highest point, it's still less than what's allowed, which is the sixty-five feet. So our average building height is even less than that.
Note that when I was talking about the demolition of the Chamber Street building. None of those spaces were ADA compliant and.
What is the ADA, remind me?
The American with Disabilities Act.
Okay.
Okay, so none, none of the stores along Chamber Street, not one of them comply, comply with that. And the new entrance and dealing with a six-foot pitch running down that street will be ADA compliant. So this side of the building will become handicapped accessible now, which it, it is not currently.
Okay, so just one follow-up question, the, the vertical arrow that I, I drew on the left-hand side. What is the measurement from the bottom of the red arrow where it intersects the blue line at street level? To the roof plan, which is indicated as sixty feet and eleven sixteenths inches. But what is the measurement actually from street level, the bottom of the red arrow, to the roof line? The line that says roof plan, what's, how high is that? Because you're saying it's within sixty-five feet, but.
It is sixty-four feet.
Yeah, sixty-four.
Wow. You did it, okay. Well, we're all talking about reducing this, the height of the north and northwest portion of the building. It'll reduce the mass, it'll, the FAR will be reduced. We're going to save sunlight that shouldn't be taken away ever. It's a historic, it's in the historic commission's. Mandate also, sunlight is, is a, something that needs to be preserved and the proportion might be better. So. The things are going to be a little bit out of proportion on Chamber Street, and I see we're getting close to eleven o'clock, how much more time do I have?
Well, I mean, how much more time do you need?
I don't know.
Well.
It depends on how long the answers take.
Well, go as far as you can and, and we'll make a determination at eleven o'clock.
Okay. So this is sort of almost sarcasm, but I'm saying that the proportion as, as proposed with the new building. Kind of leaves the old firehouse like just down, way down low in between two tall buildings and it's, it's a little awkward. And, and what I'm saying is in the future, if these variances are approved, the setback and, and the mass of the building. Adjacent to historic Bank Street, then. It won't look like this, this is, this will be what it looks like after the hotel is built, assuming they get the variance to go all the way up to. Nothing changes on the north end. And then this is Princeton future. They could build a sixty-five-foot building where the firehouse is. And I assume that they probably get a zero setback also when they tried to, when someone tried to do that. The current owner or the new owner of that property.
So I, I, I have to interrupt, I'm sorry, I mean, Bill, I, I just, we just got approvals for a, a very small FAR variance. On, on the sixteen Chambers building, the building is maxed out, you cannot add any more to it. You know, suppose somebody could tear, in the future, they could tear down the building and repack it, so it, it goes sixty-five high. But the building that's there now could not be made any, any larger, you could not do what you're proposing unless zoning was the change. So this is a little bit of a pipe dream thing.
Well, you mentioned it and I had thought of it and I was going to bring it up. A new owner of the building could take the building down and build a new building, just as GPNJ is. Tearing down an old building and building a higher structure.
And then they would have to get approvals and they would have to go through the same process, and that's the way, that's the way zoning works.
Okay, and, and this is my comment to zoning, that the precedent that you set at the end of this meeting. If you approve everything they want, all the variances they want, then this is what the future looks like on Chamber Street. Because no doubt, all the people that were encouraging. More businesses and more people coming into town, well, we can only go up, we can't go horizontal in this town, so. There's our future. And what, what you do tonight, or I guess at the next meeting, will determine what the future likes, works like.
So I guess if, if you're, I mean, as far as I understand, there are no precedents in zoning, okay? That's my understanding of the way zoning works, okay, in, in, in Princeton and elsewhere. But by that same analogy that you're talking about. I believe almost every one of the Bank Street properties are within their twenty-five-foot setback. Okay, they are within, like you've pointed out, ten feet of their property line. So they're already existing non-conforming, they've had setback variances approved, certainly Tony has in the last couple of years. You know, you're, you're talking about another setback variance, and you're saying that for the properties on Bank Street, it's permitted and it's allowed. But somehow it's not for your neighbor, so I don't believe zoning should look at variance, you look at, look at precedent. I think every project should be looked at independently, and I believe that the strength of this project, okay, clearly outweighs. The, the questions and variances which have been pointed out numerous ways.
Then, okay, I understand that, and, and so no, no precedence are looked at, but you, you had a four or five slides of. Of an FAR of precedence there and how you compared the central business district and, and went from, you know, all the buildings. Above one point five FAR, now. What kind of comparison was that, you're talking precedent that, that exists and you're using that to.
That's, that's. We're not talking about precedent as far as did those buildings get variance approval and not get variance approval? We're talking about what the scale of our community is, what the scale of the buildings are that are adjacent to it. What is the density of those buildings next to us? Are we fitting in with our neighbors, are we the same relative density? That's what that discussion is about, and that's what it illustrated.
Well, to the zoning board, I, I think that you're, you're not within the, the, the mass right up against Bank Street. I don't, I don't think that compares to anything, in fact, it doesn't compare to anything in town, the north end of the building. Show me a comparison.
Well, it's, it's just like the municipal parking lot is right up against a residential lot.
It's not, it's setback ten feet.
It is setback, it is setback from, from the property line, okay, ten feet, okay? But this, the, the houses that are there, when you're looking at it, the houses that are there comply with their thirty-foot setback. So you're looking at something that has a much greater setback. This would have the same exact setback that, that you're talking about and, and the bank's neighbors have pushed up against this.
Problem, also the point is.
Bank Street, hang on, Bank Street neighbors, you say need variances for the setbacks in their backyard? What, what are you, what were you talking about before, Josh, with?
Well, certainly Tony got a variance, when was the, when did he do the work in the back of his property?
So, so the, let me just clarify, the R-zone has a more aggressive standard rear setback, which is thirty-five feet. There's a lot of pre-existing non-conformities and anytime anybody expands their building, it creates a setback condition. So, you know, when you add on to the back of your, your property, you're gonna trigger a setback. So, so if everyone complied with the zone, this building would be in that little area, ten feet in. And again, it's not for only twenty feet, so the sixty-five feet doesn't come into play, it's only twenty feet. And the building on the residential side would be thirty-five feet back, that's what the zone is, but.
Let me get this straight, you're saying that.
Excuse me, can I, excuse me, Mr. Gray?
Yeah, okay.
Mr. DeGracia, Karen, I, I have to ask a question, Karen?
Yep.
We're, we're, it's, it's ten fifty-eight, what is the situation with going beyond eleven o'clock at this point?
Well, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's true that the meeting was noticed to go to eleven. You can continue if you wish to, that deadline was established, I think because the concern was that past eleven. People are starting to be worn out and maybe are not able to focus as much as they could or would like to. But you can continue past eleven if you wish to.
Okay, do we still, will we still have a, a court reporter?
Well, yes, because the applicant provided this court reporter, so I assume she will stay for the duration of the meeting, that's correct, isn't it, Mr. Degretzian?
I hope so, she better stay.
All right, then, then.
She's at home already.
Let's let this, let's continue it on for a little bit and then, okay, please, Mr. Gray.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm getting near the end. Thank you for the patience. Oh, I was starting to say that. Chris, you're comparing a resident asking for a setback variance to add a porch or, or something on the back of their house. And then already tiny lot with, with very limited backyard, and we're comparing that to putting a. A sixty-foot building.
At the sixty-five feet fully complies with every.
I know, I know, well, you can comply, but.
All I was saying is if zoning was fully complied with, that's what it would look like, I'm not making any other comparison. Then, you know, if the, if the houses were set back in compliance with the zone, there would be thirty-five feet on that side, that's all I said.
Okay, well, just like the lower portion of the existing building existed, I don't know how old that is, but the, anyway, the houses on Bank Street have been there for a hundred and twenty years, some of them more.
Very well.
It pre-existed a lot of things, but anyway, I'll move on. There's been this thing about the door on the back of the Bank Street side, it was mentioned by historic, by the historic commission tonight too. And it's a concern for neighbors, especially neighbors on the south, southern portion of Bank Street, closer to the hotel. We're worried about noise and foot traffic and smoking and other things that we don't, can't even imagine yet, but here it is. The, the door exists in that position today on the old building. And it's used quite frequently, especially since there's a driveway right up against the door. So there are cars and trucks coming and going there. And it, it's, I'm sure it's a fire exit or whatever, but it, it's there, okay, and.
Bill, Bill, do you want me to just give a, a short response on that, so with the door?
We're not done.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, because, because I could at least address it, because I, I think you're going to request this, that we remove it and.
You're gonna, let me finish.
Okay, sure.
So this was brought up at several meetings and Pablo said that the town, sorry, the municipality wants the door to remain. And Pablo said that GPNJ doesn't really care about the door. So to maybe answer your, your comment. What is the municipality's position on this door? Is it there, is it needed to be there for some reason, or is Chris going to say that it's gone? Is it, has it been taken away from the new plan? Chris?
We know, what I was gonna say is, that's, what you said was right, that our position has been. That if the zoning board does not want the door, we could certainly remove the door. What, what are, the way this has happened is there's an existing door now, it leads to a fully paved area. A couple of cars parked there, it has current access.
Right.
Under our initial plan, we basically put curb cut in, removed in the pervious, put a pocket park there. And the idea was to have the door there for access for maintenance. If the, and, and at one time, we weren't sure if it was needed for emergency, but we don't think it was. So if it's not needed for any type of emergency access, we have no problem removing it. Bank Street had indicated they didn't want people going in and out, and we said the door will remain locked. And if, if the board wants us to keep it, we can have a door there that will be completely locked, except for some on the maintenance. It doesn't open up into the building, it only opens up into the car park and it will be locked with no lights. And if the board doesn't think it's necessary for us to go out there and maintain it through there, we'll just remove it. So it's up to the board and if they want it, great, if they don't want it, great.
Okay, so the board is going to have to consider that, and I guess the board can't answer that question right now.
We, we can, we can discuss that and when we go into executive session.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman? It's Michael Laplace here, the planning. I was just gonna note from the municipal standpoint, in the meetings that I was involved with, with the applicant, the municipality never requested the door to remain. And in fact, there were parts of municipal staff that asked the applicant to consider removing it, so I just wanted to put that out.
Okay, then we were getting different information from, from GPNJ.
Well, they, they might have misinterpreted discussions, I, I can't speak for them.
Okay.
I can tell you, it's no requirement.
You should ask the question of GPNJ, because I didn't recommend that the door stay or go, Michael didn't, and neither did Jim Purcell, so.
And we resolved.
You need to discuss it with him.
Well, I, I got the answer from you now and that, that solves the problem. That it's really up to the board and it's up to the municipality if the door stays or goes, or if you, well, it's not up to you.
So I, so.
Really need a door to push a lawnmower out to, to mow a little bit of grass?
So, so I, I was in a meeting with the town with Jack, Jack West, okay? And the comment came up was they didn't want the park that wasn't going to be maintained by, by the ownership of the property. Okay, they didn't want the responsibility to have to maintain the park, okay? I, I believe Dan Stockton also mentioned that, that for maintenance purposes, it was a good idea. To allow the hotel to have access to the park. If, if it's not needed, if, if the new town engineers don't want it, then it could clearly go away. But it was said in the meeting, it was discussed, and that's why the door was kept.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is Jim Purcell, the current engineer, and my opinion.
my opinion is that is the same opinion that for maintenance purposes and access from the rear of the building would be beneficial. But that is really a decision to be made by the hotel owner. Um, and if they don't need it for maintenance, if they don't need it for an emergency access, we are not in any position to object to it being removed.
Thank you. I, I don't want to drag on too, too long about this issue, but, but, but it is a concern. Because now we know there's a, a restaurant in the hotel, and people are coming and going in the parking lot. And of course, the door is going to be locked, Chris, that's what you said. Um.
It's not an access point for the hotel in any way.
Okay, well, I'm done then, okay.
Okay.
Do you want me to play this? Because when, when, uh, a paper shredder pulls up to that door and brings things outside to shred on Bank Street, it's very loud.
Bill, I, I got good news, that's for any type of office, we're not, we're not going to be shredding paper, so.
Okay. And I'll skip. Uh, I'm actually getting tired, so, I'll, I'll, I'll continue on, but, um, I do have, I can't see the number, I probably have. I have a few more.
Do you want to, would you like to continue it at our next meeting?
I would, I would love to, yeah.
Okay, so we can pick this up, we can pick up the balance of your testimony.
Okay.
At the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, this meeting now will be continued. Derek, when is the next, Claudia, when is the next scheduled meeting?
We had, uh, checked on the twentieth, and I'm not sure if we have a quorum, Claudia, do we? We're, we're looking at two dates, the twentieth, and then the first, uh, Wednesday in, um, February, and Claudia had pulled the, the board, let me, uh.
I think we were only asked about the one date.
Okay, my microphone is not working, but the twentieth.
The twen- her microphone's not working, but she said that the, uh, the twentieth, which is a Wednesday,
Okay.
is, um, we have a quorum.
Okay, so Karen, would, there be no additional noticing for this next meeting?
Not by the applicant, but the board staff will have to notice, because this is an added meeting now, the twentieth.
Okay, all right, so the, so this, this hearing will be continued to January twentieth at seven-thirty, and we'll pick up from where we left off.
And, and Mr. Chair, um, just for the record, so it's clear, anyone that wants to, um, participate in the meeting, they could go to the municipal website to the agenda for the twentieth and find the link.
Yes, okay, thank you.
I just want to make it clear for the record.
Okay, and anybody who, um, as Mr. Gray had mentioned, there were people that asked questions that, that he felt were not adequately answered to the questioner's satisfaction. So if that's the case, we'll, we'll try to resolve that at the next meeting.
Sure, I, I thought some of them were more rhetorical, and that we had answered all the questions, but sure, any questions you guys got, you, you just, you know, just let us know.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you all for coming, and, uh, we'll see you on the twentieth.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do.
You're good night.
All right.